Safe streets, vibrant neighborhoods, successful business and commerce. These are things that make a healthy community. We are a diverse community, rural, suburban, urban. A multitude of languages and ethnicities, ages and experiences. We are a collaborative community. Public-private partnerships make us a model community that others want to follow. It is what makes us unique. It is what makes us strong. The employees of Kent County reflect our diversity and seek to serve our communities.
People in this county, in this area, we wrap our arms around each other. We come together to collaborate, to solve problems. We're all working for the good of the whole. And I think that's wonderful. And you can see it. You can see it as you drive around Kent County.
Our impact starts the day a baby is born and a birth certificate is issued. To protecting children from deadly diseases through vaccination, to the public safety and justice provided by law enforcement and the courts, to offering veterans services and caring for the elderly. Every day, we work to keep our communities robust.
I think if you are somebody who's interested in serving your community, in building a strong knowledge base and a good group of people to work with, then the county is one of your best employment opportunities out there. It's been completely rewarding in every way I could possibly explain for 26 years. And I feel like I grow every single day still today.
Leading these dedicated employees are 19-member Board of Commissioners and our county Administrator/Controller, along with our elected officials and appointed department directors, placing emphasis on civic involvement, quality housing, vibrant neighborhoods, and strong solid infrastructure to allow businesses to thrive. Professional, dedicated, collaborative, and innovative.
Behind the scenes collaboration between foundations, charitable organizations, nonprofits, for-profit businesses, public sector demonstrated through the county, the city of Grand Rapids, the townships, all the cities and the villages in our area. If we don't come together, then we will not have the strength that we have today. And I only hope to build upon that.
Our aim is to make our communities the best they can be. We are involved in exciting development projects, sustainable recycling programs, and creative progressive prevention programming. We partner with elected officials impacting policy ideas that become great achievements. We seek opportunities to reach out into the community and offer our services to help our residents make Kent County thrive.
Our relationship is solid, both from a staff standpoint at the county level, as well as the Board of Commissioners. And they understand what we do and the benefits that we can do for the community. And vice versa, we couldn't do what we do without the help of Kent County.
While most of us are busy running our lives, Kent County's elected officials, Administrator/Controller, and over 1,600 employees are serving the communities where we live our lives, so we can all have a place we are proud to call home. Kent County, it's life well-run.
Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's date is Thursday, July 26, 2018. The time is 8:30 a.m. We will begin today with roll call.
Good morning. Commissioners Skaggs, Corndyke.
Present.
Womack.
Here.
Bolkowski.
Present.
Tallon.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Breeby.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Voorhees.
Present.
Ponstein.
Here.
Stuck.
Here.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Here.
Commissioners Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Here.
Vonk.
Here.
Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 members present, one absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. We will then call on Commissioner Ponstein for invocation and leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. We have a lot of great partnerships throughout the community. There's a lot of businesses that do a lot of things, sometimes on our behalf and sometimes for the benefit of the community. One of these organizations employs 2,800 people and provide mental health services and disability services. And I'd like to introduce someone who gave the invocation for me today. Reverend Bruce Van Deriger is Executive Director of Hope Network Pastoral Services. Hope Network has a simple model in Christian service. Hope Network empowers individuals to achieve the highest level of independence. So, join me in welcoming Reverend Bruce Van Deriger.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. Let's pray. God of wisdom and God of grace, before this body addresses the business of this day, we offer our praise to you as the one from whom all blessings flow. Indeed, your blessings have flowed upon us and flow upon us still, for like your mercies they are new every morning. Lord, you have blessed us with a wonderful county in which to live, in which to prosper, and to serve one another. You have blessed us with successful industry, with beautiful surroundings, and with wonderful citizens. And Lord, even as we give thanks for those things in which we prosper, we also remember those who face challenges and who face difficulties on a daily basis. So we thank you for organizations like the one I serve, Hope Network, that can provide services and many others to provide help and encouragement and empowerment in life. We pray, Lord, for those who struggle and who are facing challenges in our county. And on this day, oh God, as this governing body conducts their business, I ask for your Spirit to be at work in their midst, that you might stir up in them the gifts they need to advise and to guide Kent County with integrity and focus with the tasks at hand. Give them judiciousness, not only to consider themselves, but all those who are affected by the decisions they make. Give them wisdom to govern and the conflicting interests and issues of our time. Give them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Give them a keen sense of justice and righteousness. Give them confidence in what is good and fitting, and give them the ability to work together in harmony, even when there is honest disagreement. And help them to remember that our future is tied not to making the right decisions, but to trusting the right Lord. It's a joy to come before your throne of grace, confident of your audience, grateful for your advocacy, and resting in your authority. In your most blessed name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ponstein. We'll move next to Agenda Item 5A, which is a Special Order of Business. It's our second-quarter quarterly Employee Service Recognition Award. And I'd ask Darius Quinn to come forward. He will give you information on this quarter's recipient. And as a background, about eight years ago, the county started this program to recognize employees who have provided outstanding quality customer service to the citizens of Kent County and our internal customers. And each quarter, we recognize one. Darius, who is our Human Resources Manager, heads the committee that looks at recipients, possible recipients, and makes a decision on it. And at this time, I'll turn it over to Darius.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you. Kent County Board of Commissioners Administrator Britt, we're here this morning to recognize Eugene Gary from the Kent County Juvenile Detention Center, as he has been selected as our employee of the second quarter. I've had the opportunity to know Eugene for the last 18 years, as you again, as the Board Chair mentioned. We started this program as a way to recognize some of our employees for the great work that they do here in Kent County. So I'll just share with you briefly why Eugene was selected. And one of our residents, who was in the 69-bed facility, wrote, "While in juvenile detention, I met a staff member named Gino," that's Eugene, "who helped point me in the right direction through the game of chess. Every single game that me and Gino played, I basically lost. I lost over 100 games, except the last one. I remember the smile that he, Gino, gave me. He just looked up and said, 'You win.'" It's knowing that a staff member or somebody that really has no obligation to care for you at all can actually look you in the eye and actually give you something to actually look forward to. It's just that changing point in life for me. I found my way and had the same outlook on my future that Gino helped to instill through chess. I'm now headed to Grand Rapids Community College to study business." Not only did the young man write this letter, but Gino was also recognized in the media for helping to determine. Behind the walls of that 69-bed facility, it's really difficult for me to see what's actually happened. So with that in mind, we just want to say thank you for your hard work, Gino.
(applause)
him as Gino. He's been a very faithful employee of Kent County. He's been a very faithful employee and to our young kids in detention. I see some of our juveniles who have grown up, and I've seen them out in the community being successful. And they always ask me, "Is Gino still there?" So I'm just very proud for this moment for him. That young man who wrote that letter received a $2,000 scholarship to attend college. And it's just good to see when kids get redirected and make some positive decisions. And we're just grateful that Gino was a part of that. He's not big on these type of events and things and being recognized, but I'm glad that this happened. And it didn't come from necessarily us. It came from our actual residents. So, thank you, Gino, for your service.
(applause)
Thank you again, Gino. You make us proud to be affiliated with Kent County. We move next to our second Special Order of Business, which is a report from the Kent County Land Bank Authority, their annual report. And we'll call David Allen forward to deliver that. Good morning, David.
Good morning, Chair Saulfeld, Commissioners, Mr. Britt. Happy to be here. It's a long time coming. I really look forward to this. Before I get started, honestly, we would be nowhere without a great team, so I did ask our team to be in attendance. David De Velder, our Director of Development, is out of town. But Ezekiel Mohica, our Administrative Assistant, he'd stand. Inka Fadharati is our Director of Finance. And Antoine Gooch is our Project Manager, manages all of our projects. Our team, you guys can have a seat, has been responsible for a pretty incredible amount of work. And it's through their dedication, their hard work to our mission that really makes us successful. So, happy to give you this presentation this morning. Every time I give a presentation, I always start with this. I think it's important as a baseline. There's a lot of misnomers about what a land bank is and what a land bank does in the state of Michigan. And I always go back to the original legislation that created land banks. And this is directly from Public Act 258-203. And if you read both of those, really, land banks were designed to strengthen the economy of the local state and the state and the local units of government. So from the outset, in the day that I took the reins of this organization in 2011, my goal was always to measure the organization based on the economic development that we create. So with that in mind, after our first five years, we contracted with Michigan State University's Land Policy Institute. We were going to use University of Michigan, but Ken insisted that we use Michigan State. So they did an incredible quantitative study. You were all provided copies of that. If you're a new commissioner and you weren't, I'd be happy to provide that to you. Just a couple of quick highlights from that study. That Michigan State did what's called a hedonic price analysis and determined that all homes within 500 feet of a Kent Land Bank Authority activity statistically sold at a higher price than if they would have without that activity. And this included what the market was doing. So we all know that we're in a hot real estate market. And what this is saying is that the market had no impression on that. This has exceeded what the market did. So what that means is that homeowners who sold their home within one of our houses that we did, real estate agents that listed those homes, all made more money, which is a good thing for the homeowner, for their legacy. It's a good thing for the real estate community. Our economic impact in our first five years amounted to $42,899,000. It's about 150% return on investment. This equates to about $1.77 in regional economic activity for every dollar spent by the land bank. And we created 266 permanent new jobs in the county in that five-year period. And those are direct jobs. There's also ancillary jobs. That gets gray. We didn't feel comfortable going there. I think what I'm most proud about in this 266 jobs, a very large number of those, were with Next Step, which hires folks who are coming out of prison or folks who are difficult to employ, with Building Bridges, which is a division of Bethany, which works with youth aging out of foster care, and with several local and minority-owned businesses, which is a core value of ours. Our work in affordable housing is robust. We created 88 homes, which were purchased, or we allowed nonprofits to purchase homes, 88 homes for affordable homeownership. And that's with ICCF, Link, Habitat, New Development, Next Step, and Wellhouse. We raised $1.25 million for Habitat and gave it directly to Habitat to demolish blighted properties and build new homes. A lot of that is now, the fruit of that is happening in their new project in the Grand Rapids corridor, where this $1.25 million demoed the houses, which paved the way for that new multimillion-dollar development happening. Under contract with City of Grand Rapids, last year alone, we produced 15 homes, which were sold to buyers at or below 80% area median income. And we have 24 vacant lots that were deeded to us from the city that they had owned since the 90s. They couldn't do anything with the lots because they didn't have clear title. We cleared the title. And all the homes built on those 24 lots will be sold to buyers making at or below 100% area median income. Most recently, we partnered with Dwelling Place on a very large project on Alpine and Myrtle, as well as the former Pine School, which is a GRPS school. We obtained a $1.2 million loan to secure seven parcels. We have owned those homes for 18 months to allow Dwelling Place to get their tax credit. We secured Pine School from GRPS with an option to purchase. And we secured $750,000 from the DEQ in site remediation funds to clean up the site, what will now, the breaking ground here assuming on 68 new apartments for families earning at or below 60% AMI. So since our inception, we have been directly responsible for the creation of 195 affordable housing units in six years. We just completed our first several years, and we engaged in a new strategic planning process. I want to highlight just a couple of things. I promise you, I won't read everything on the slide in the interest of time. But our strategic planning process coincide with the Michigan Land Bank Leadership Institute that we have every year, where all the leaders of the land banks around the state, MISTDA, representatives from the governor's office and the state land bank get together. And the key of this last year's summit was Land Bank 2.0. And what was stated to every land bank in the state of Michigan, and I quote, "If all land banks are known for in Michigan is assembling and tearing down properties, then we've missed the mark." And that was from Josh Brigette. Josh Brigette, the Director of the State Land Bank, our authorizing authority at the state, really pushed hard on land banks being transformational and not transactional. So that was a real key aspect of our planning process. How can we be transformational and not transactional? We looked at the tools that we have to offer as a land bank, things that are specific to land banks, and really wanted to focus on, in this transactional-to-transformational, on how can we offer these tools to the market. So one of the key things that came out of the strategic planning process, which included our advisory council stakeholders, community stakeholders, representatives from various interest groups, that it would be a good idea, a smart move, from a branding perspective, to change our name. So perhaps you've seen the media on this, but we are still the Kent County Land Bank Authority, but we rebranded as Inova Lab, which is a play on the word innovation lab, or an innovative toolbox for community transformation. We adopted a new mission statement. Our Inova Lab is a real estate development partner that offers innovative toolbox for community transformation. Our vision is to offer unique redevelopment tools to local government, communities, developers, and transformative partnerships that further economic revitalization in Kent County. So if you go on our website, our newly revamped website, we list the tools that we have available. And we are distributing that through the GRAR, through the Michigan Association of Builders, through the Grand Rapids Builders Association. And we have a lot of builders, a lot of developers coming to us, asking us to help use these tools to help them. One of the, two of the, two of them that I think I'd like to point out real quickly, one is our ability to clear title. I would say that probably in the last two years, we've cleared title on 15 properties that were purchased from auction, from the tax auction by investors years ago. Now that the market's hot, they want to sell, and they can't sell because they don't have clear title. So we were able to clear title on those properties so that they could get sold. And the second is our work on environmental, work on environmental. Since our inception, we've brought about $9 million in environmental cleanup funds to Kent County, both through the EPA and the DEQ. And that would not have happened if we were not in place. So those are the two of the toolkits that I think, that I'd like to bring to bear, that I think are really unique to us and what we're doing. Changes in 2018. The biggest change for us in 2018 is we will no longer be involved in tax foreclosures. The city of Grand Rapids is contracting with us to clear the title on their this year's tax foreclosures and clean the lead out of these properties, which we're able to do. But all those properties will then be deeded and transferred to the nonprofit housing corporations and turned into affordable housing. That was not our decision. That was a decision by the city of Grand Rapids. Plainfield Township owns several parcels that they've owned for years, again, since the 90s. They've contracted with us to clear the title on those properties and help some new houses get built on those properties, which otherwise wouldn't be able to get done. So we'll be doing no direct tax foreclosure work. Probably the biggest change for us, which has transpired honestly over the last six months, is our work on modular homes. We were contacted by Matt Mossad, one of the principals from Universal Forest Products, who is really concerned about the housing crisis that we're facing in West Michigan. And he introduced us to Champion Homes, which is one of the nation's largest builders of modular homes. So very quickly, I just want to show you kind of what we're doing and explain what we're doing in modular. Modular homes are stick-built homes that are built off-site. And just one really quick example. So what you see here is a floor plan for a townhouse. Then that same, that same design can then be installed as a single-family house or installed as four-one-bedroom apartments. So you could look at a streetscape here, and you, these are actually the exact same houses, but from the exterior, they look quite different. Modular homes are being built at the cost of about $100 a square foot all-in. Standard construction right now is costing between $150 and $200 a square foot. So we're able to bring houses to the market, and actually, this price range, we actually have them down to as low as $159,000. $159,000 to $1239, depending on the buyer's choice of size and design. We've paved, we believe we've paved the way for universal acceptance of modular homes. Most recently, Governor Snyder, this has gotten on his radar, we are now giving biweekly reports to the governor. The governor's actually met with the Michigan Association of Builders to get their assurances that they're okay with this. The governor's very excited about this. The Michigan Association Builders has said, "There are no builders building in this price point." So there are no homes being built at this price point. So we're really meeting an important niche, bringing Champion Homes' high-end modular division. And this is the most important distinction. Through a partnership with the state land bank, one of the unique things about modular is they're very difficult to finance for the developer. So if you're a developer, you want to build a modular home, you can't use standard bank financing. It's half-down, half-on-delivery. You're buying a product. So you have to have cash or a very interested lender. So the state land bank has set up a loan fund where anybody, not just land banks, any builder, any developer, anybody wants to put modular, we will partner with them to help them use these state-stamped homes to get on their lots. So, and we are doing this at no cost. So the cost that we pay from Champion is the cost that the builder buys. We're not marking these up one dime. This is not for us to make money. This is to get much-needed inventory into the market. So the Grand Rapids Realtors Association, we met with their board. They were extremely excited by this. They put out an article in their newsletter offering any builder. And literally, we're getting calls from 10 to 12 real estate agents or builders a week around the region that have lots that haven't been able to build because they can't meet the price point, that now with the financing and with this tool, they're able to get much-needed housing into the market. So we're pretty excited by this. We think it's really an important niche that we're playing. And we've gotten assurances from all the parties, both in the private sector and the public sector, that this is really the right product at the right time, delivered in the right way. So that's really a big focus of ours right now, offering the tools that we have to developers, both for-profit, nonprofit, and government, to create better economic opportunities in their region. So with that, I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions by Commissioners. Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you. Chair Saulfeld, good morning. Mr. Allen. I understand that the moves that you're making to Inova Lab really borders on private industry. You're becoming more of a competitor in the market as a private industry. Under the land bank authorization, you can capture property taxes. Do you do that in the Inova program as well?
No, sir. If a private developer wants to buy from us, we're merely selling a product that we've already paved the way for that to happen, so we will not collect 5.50 tax on that. The only property we can collect a 5.50 tax on is a property that we own, and we do not take title to the actual parcel.
Do you agree that you do border on private sector competition? You're a quasi-government entity competing with the market?
I would say we're offering something new to the market that currently doesn't exist, so we're actually enhancing the market. And evidence of that is with the response that we've got from the Grand Rapids Realtors to this, the Michigan Builders Association, and private developers and real estate agents who are calling us, saying that they want to buy this product that they otherwise couldn't buy.
You don't need to be a quasi-governmental entity to sell modular products, do you?
No, they, no, you don't. But we have invested hundreds of thousands of dollars of staff time and time to bring this to the market, which a private developer probably wouldn't have done, as well as a private developer wouldn't sell these at no markup. We're selling these at cost. So it takes a long time to be, to build this relationship that we've taken the time to build because we know that the market needs it.
I have a grave concern, Commissioners, with that, if I make that quasi-governmental competition with the private sector. And, thank you.
Commissioner Antor.
Thank you, Chair. I was just wondering, have all the Brownfield locations in Grand Rapids been identified as such, or are there, is it continuing?
Yeah, the DEQ has given us a map of all the sites that they have identified as Brownfield sites around, around the region. And we're working very closely with them and kind of picking them off on a top-to-bottom basis.
Okay, so they've all been identified. There's none in the works right now? The study's complete?
No, new ones come about as the transactions happen with a BEA. But the ones that they know about, we have a map of those, and we know where they're at. The big focus right now is on abandoned gas stations, getting the tanks out of the ground, which was the case on the Alpine Myrtle project.
Do you have a map online where you look at?
I'd be happy to provide to the entire commission. I got, I don't have it handy.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, the DEQ has provided that to us.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
All right, thank you, Chair. Thank you, Mr. Allen, for your hard work and your continued efforts to increase affordable housing in our community. My question, you know, I absolutely agree that it's desperate out there if you're trying to find affordable housing. For folks with disabilities, it's beyond desperation. There are not affordable, accessible units to be had. You know, subsidized units, you can't even find them on the market, you know, without additional renovation and what have you. So are you looking at accessible units, universal design, visitability? Because, I mean, I know there are stock photos or quasi-stock photos.
What you're seeing there is just an example. We have 13 unique, actually, 15 unique designs. And out of those 15 unique designs, five of them are, have the ability to be installed at zero step with full visibility.
All right, thank you much, sir.
Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. Good morning, Dave. I guess welcome back to full-time civilian life. Thank you. Couple of questions. Is the Kent County Land Bank the only land bank that owns land bank properties in the county? Or is the state land bank also pick up? You were mentioning the Brownfields.
The state land bank in Kent County only owns one property. They bought that, but they took control, or two or three properties, they took control of those before us being there. One of them, they're working with the City of Grand Rapids to get sold. The other two are nominal, not even buildable lots, that we're going to try and help them transfer to the neighbor.
Okay, so that's really a carryover from a prior operation.
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay. So the other question, and maybe a bit follow-up by Commissioner Voorhees. When a private developer desires or wants to pursue the development of 150 to $200,000 modular, do they have to work with your organization? Are they able to make use of that financing, do it on their own?
Well, so the way, the way it works is we're merely the vehicle to sell them the property. They handle the rest of the development themselves, and they make all the profits.
But if, if... You don't have the property, they go... But if, if you don't have the property, they go out and buy a lot that's just right for a modular, they're able to do that themselves?
Sure, there's probably twenty different modular companies around that, that would be happy to deliver them one.
And how many of these do you propose or project that you're going to be developing the next year or so?
I, I honestly can't say because I don't know, the response, if I, if you're asking me right now, the response that we're getting from the private sector, from the developers and builders, is pretty significant. Because the price point, nobody can build at a price point that these are being able to be delivered at. The other thing is that, um, you can't just go on a catalog, order a modular home and have it delivered. There's a process with the state where it has to be approved through LORA, there has to be a state stamp. We've taken the time and money and energy to get that all done with these models that we're now offering at cost to any developer that wants them. We've kind of paved the way for them, really.
I compress you just a little bit. Significant means different things to different people.
Sure.
Are you anticipating that could put as many as twenty new, uh, homes on the market?
Fifty new homes on the market? Um, right now, there's a real estate agent that contacted us that has like twenty-five lots in Ottawa, not in Kent County, in Ottawa County and in Allegan County, and he wants to put a modular on every one of them because he has buyers for every one of them.
You have lost your skills.
And, 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 uh, we're selling those to him at cost.
Yeah.
Um, we have a private company that we contract with that does the installation. It's open book, we literally show them, "This is our bill from Champion, this is what you pay." So it's no di- we've just greased the skids, if you will, to make it easier for developers to, to make this happen. And the interesting thing about this particular developer is the, that build, that, that property that we designed to fit on a lot in Grand Rapids happens to also fit on his lots in Ottawa. But in Grand Rapids, what I'm building it for is about what I could sell it for, maybe a loss, because the value's not there. That same building that cost him a hundred and eighty to build, he can sell in Ottawa County for three-hundred-and-forty, so we've just increased its profits, uh, two or three-fold. We have another developer in Muskegon who's a high-end, multimillion-dollar home builder who's looking at this and saying, "I, I can, I can quadruple my production this way and quadruple my profits." Um, he's, he's over the moon excited about it.
Good. Thank you, Dave. Maybe we'll chat later on some.
Yes, if you have any questions, by all means, please give me a call, I know you have a, a day ahead of you.
Commissioner Baugh.
Thank you, Chair. We had a complete dialogue when we reviewed the land bank, uh, last year, and we discussed a lot of issues and so forth. You mentioned changes here in your report today. Can you expand on that, changes with Grand Rapids and what's happening there? And then, uh, a question, when I went out with you a few years ago, you had large commercial areas that you were looking at, could you talk about that a little bit? And then have you improved your relationship with Realtors? So there's three questions there I'd like you to answer.
Um, as far as the Realtors go, all I can tell you is about a month ago, I made a presentation before their board of directors, um, received no questions, no concerns, and they published an article about this in their newsletter. So they haven't taken a position on it, but there's, the need for inventory is acute. So I, I would feel that it's in a good, good place. Um, as far as commercial properties, we're not acquiring any properties. Um, that's, that part of our strategic plan is to be transformational, is that if we're acquiring it, we're doing it, it limits our capacity, but if we partner with a developer, whether it be nonprofit, for-profit, and government, and use our tools, it can exponentially grow the amount of work that can be done. So, um, so, uh, we did have a large commercial property that was donated to us. Uh, that was, that person approached us, it's the former AT&amp;T building in Wyoming on the corner of Thirty-Sixth and Michael, and we're working with a, a large-scale, um, senior housing provider on, on providing housing on that lot. But that, they approached us, we did not approach them. So as far as commercial goes, that's nothing, we're not looking to acquire any property, that's, that's not in our plans. Um, as far as our strategic plan and changes in our strategic plan, I think that's really it, is that we're not looking to go out there and be the developer, make things happen. We're looking to say, "What's our role in this and what tools can we offer?" And I think the modulars is just one example of that. We're not looking to develop modular homes, we're looking to partner with people that want to develop modular homes to increase the amount of inventory in the market.
Thank you. Thank you for your good work.
Vice Chair Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Two quick questions. Um, on the selection of the builder and developer, if there is such an interest, is, is it clearly defined what the criteria is and how you're choosing those specific folks? Are they bidding, or what's the selection process?
Well, they're coming to us with property that they own, so that we're not selecting them, they're selecting us.
Okay, so it's not anyone?
And they have to be a licensed builder in the state of Michigan.
Okay, so it's not anyone purchasing any property from you and then, okay. And then, um, on this new venture, if there's no profit made, how are you guys compensated? So how is staff compensated? How is the organization as a whole compensated?
Um, Champion Homes recognizes that there's an opportunity here because modular has been lagging behind in the state of Michigan. It's probably the one state, so I could get into the weeds on this, but suffice it to say, there's some, the fact that LORA, a state agency, has to approve this as opposed to a third party, really slows things down. So the gov- us, through the governor's office, is trying to change that. But it, there's really, it's really been lagging behind and there's been a, a great need for it. So Champion recognizes that, and so what they've created for us is an incentive, that if we, through selling to builders that own land, sell a certain amount, then they'll pay us a fee for doing that. But that's on them, that's not on us.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I want to follow up on that. So if they don't pay a fee, again, how are you compensated?
Well, how we're compensated is that we still, we own about a hundred and twenty-five lots in the city of Grand Rapids that, that we've listed for sale on our website for years that we haven't sold. We hope to put modular homes on those, uh, through the sale of those, uh, that we'll be getting the five-fifty on those. Currently, they have no taxable value because they're a vacant lot. Uh, we certainly have some, uh, positive revenue from this donated site on Thirty-Sixth and Wyoming. Um, we, uh-
Is that money that goes into the land bank?
Yeah, for operations.
So, and that, so you're paid out of the funds of the, of the land? Does that mean that that would include the, the fees that otherwise, that are coming in through the tax when you acquire it and then sell it?
Which we're not doing any longer, so, right. So like with the city of Grand Rapids, as opposed to us taking them on, taking all the risk, we're charging them a fee for service to clear the title, to, uh, handle relocation, to handle brownfields. So what we're, what we're moving to more towards is a fee-for-service basis, that if we don't provide a service that the market wants, we're not going to get that fee. Really, that was a key part, uh, Commissioner Saulfeld, that was a key part, Chair Saulfeld, that was a key part of our strategic plan, is that what we really want to move for, move towards is a fee-for-service. So in the work with Dwelling Place, we put a million and a half dollars on the street at our risk, in order for them to get the tax credit, we charged them fifty thousand and brought seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, we only charged them fifty thousand dollars fee for that. So fee-for-service is really where we're moving. Um, and if, if there are no fees, then we will have to cross that bridge when we come to it, but thus far, that's not been a problem.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, Mr. Allen, I would like to play a service with the land bank. I've always been a supporter, sometimes a critic of the land bank, but your quasi-government organization, one thing that I do like is that it has brought some transparency, it has brought, uh, more inclusion, it has answered some questions surrounding the mystery of real estate in Grand Rapids. Most of the private companies are in an open book. So when the land bank came along, some of the things you did that people supported, there were some things that people did not support, but it was the first time they got an open book to look more into the real estate market and how it works. And your organization can be leveraged, the, the public opinion and feedback can help leverage and shape the land bank. You know, there could be one direction, you get public feedback because of the governmental part of it, then you have to address it or answer it, where we don't have that with the private companies. Um, so I just want to give you your respect for that, and I, and I do believe your new goal is still aligned with impacting the economy for local and state. Um, what are some of the things that you would say the land bank either did more aggressively or different than some of the private companies in our region when it came to inclusion? Because, uh, you have a worker with you, someone who works with you, Antoine Gooch, and I know a lot of young men in our community have let me know that he's reached out to them about jobs, training, uh, knowing about the, uh, money coming from the state for a removal of lead in homes, and giving them an opportunity to get a jumpstart early in training. So what are some of the things that you would say the land bank is doing more aggressively for minority inclusion of our Hispanic brothers and sisters, African-Americans, and people who may have failed? Marginalized in the real estate market when it came to jobs.
I can't speak for what the private sector does, I can only speak for what we do. Uh, but I can tell you that, um, it's been an intention of ours from day one, is to use as much suppliers, builders, contractors, from the neighborhood where the homes are located. And since a large percentage of our work has happened in Grand Rapids and has happened in predominant African-American, Hispanic neighborhoods, we feel it's very important that the folks who live in that neighborhood see folks working in that home that look like them. Um, that creates, um, hope, it creates ultimately economic, economic opportunity, economic development, to be honest with you. So, um, so for us, that's just been an, an intention and, and the work that we're doing with these contractors. And sometimes when you work with a small startup contractor, there's things you have to do that are difficult. Sometimes you have to put money half-down, which a lot of people don't do. So, you know, we've helped contractors get financing, we've, you know, worked through some rough edges, so, um, it, it, you know, it's just been a, frankly, for me personally, I can just tell you, it's been an intentionality of every organization I've ever been a part of, because it's something that I think is important and I think that you need to do happen. It's a personal thing.
Please keep that focus and, uh, good luck in your endeavors. The Kent County Land Bank, AKA Ino- Inova Lab. Innovation Lab, Inova Lab. Thank you, Mr. Allen.
Commissioner Hennessy.
Thank you for explaining all this. It's also very new and your, your own transformation is really quite remarkable. I have several questions and they're sort of here and there. Um, you talked about, um, lead, eliminating lead hazards. When you were talking, you said eliminating, the, the slideshow showed the mediation, and there's a difference between them. Which way are you going to be going in terms of the older homes that you take on or, or direct?
Sure. Um, when the land bank takes title to a property, by default, it's a brownfield, which includes, uh, uh, the ability to, a brownfield tax circumfinance, to do complete remediation of lead, um, not just, um, risk assessment and, and reducing the risk. So, um, what I understand from the city of Grand Rapids, and I, you'd have to ask them, not us, is they intend on using that brownfield tax circumfinance just on the tax foreclosures to do some form of a scattered site to handle the lead problems in those homes. But that's being directed by the city of Grand Rapids, not by us.
Okay. I'm, I'm curious, do you have an exclusive in this area with Champion Homes? Are you the only one?
We do not have an exclusive, there's no signed contract, there's no signed agreement. We're, we're a dealer.
Okay. The other thing, and, uh, you, you talk about it being-
I can't speak to what Champion would do if somebody was to call them, that's on them, but I, I can know that they're getting a lot of volume out of us right now, so.
Okay, um, you talk, you know, this is a good price point. However, is it a good price point for people who are even one-hundred percent, they are the median income? Is, is it affordable to them?
You know, Carol, that's a discussion that we probably should, that take a long time to, to have a conversation with. I would say that in general, a person making the hundred percent area median income in the Grand Rapids area can, if they have good credit and are able to obtain a mortgage, can typically qualify for a mortgage close to two-hundred thousand dollars a year, in a, in a normal circumstance. But you know the lending, lending industry, it's very, very difficult. Unfortunately, what we're seeing in the market right now is that most of our home buyers that aren't able to buy homes are new families, typically strapped with a lot of student loan and all sorts of ancillary things, so it's very individual.
Okay, I appreciate, okay.
What I can tell you is that the families that are looking for homes in this price point are being outbid by people that are making a lot of money, that are coming down and, and buying those homes and doing renovations. And so what they're doing now is they're starting to move down, and so basically, everything moves down, which basically squeezes out the bottom half of the market, which is really difficult.
Okay. You, you mentioned other counties. Are you going to be creating a more formalized structure and working with Ottawa or Muskegon?
So, so right now, we've been approached by the state land bank, uh, to work in two other areas under a contract, and this is again, Chair Saulfeld, to that fee-for-service. Ottawa County has a land bank, but it doesn't exist. Uh, Housing Next, Ryan Kilpatrick, has been a lot of news about that, has twenty acres that they're looking to develop. They're looking to work with us to help them develop that, uh, for, um, using modular because they, uh, they've got a market study that there's a shortage of about fifteen-thousand houses in Ottawa County. Uh, that's just being done under contract. And then, uh, the state land bank owns two shuttered, uh, public schools in Muskegon Heights, and there's a dire need for affordable housing in Muskegon Heights, and they would also like to contract with us to help them bring in, an eighty-nine-thousand-dollar home into the Muskegon Heights area using this modular concept after tearing down that school. And again, that would be a contracted fee-for-service. I can tell you that what we're doing is so cutting-edge, I mean, I, I got a call from the state of New York land bank director because they want to start looking at modular. I've got, the governor's office is looking at this. This is not something that, that is happening in isolation. You know, I understand the concerns and the criticisms, but I can tell you that in the, in the state and in the region, and actually now in the country, people are really starting to take notice of what we're doing because it's so innovative and it's so important.
Don't be entrusted to watch this unfold. I have one more question. You talk, fee-for-service and the, the cost for title transfer, um, has, is that going to be increasing?
Uh, it is, uh, there's the cost for the lawyer, I can't control that, and then our fee on top of this, the same fee we always charged.
So five-hundred dollars still?
Yes.
Okay.
But because there's fewer properties, the legal costs are, are higher now.
Okay. We could talk about that later. Thank you.
Commissioner Breevey.
Thank you, Chair. Um, a few minutes ago, you mentioned that there's a hundred and twenty-five lots available in the city of Grand Rapids, and the information's on your website. I went to your website and I couldn't find it. Um, so could you tell me where that is, and also can the in, in, individual purchase those lots, or are you looking for a developer?
So we're in the process of transferring the website over from KCL Beta and Inova Lab, so there's, there's some missing pieces which we're still working on. So that list, we'll go back up there. I can tell you that, uh, we get a lot of calls, we have a standard list, I'd be happy to provide it to you. Uh, the, the, um, the list, uh, again, these are all, any home, any, any vacant lots that we've had, that private owners have come to us with, um, we've been happy to sell them. We just sold one just the other day, um, that we're not holding these. The only problem that we have is that there's twenty-five of the lots, the city of Grand Rapids transferred to us, and they put a hundred percent affordability restriction on it, and we have a legal difficulty selling that to somebody, because if I sell it to you, I can't ensure that you're going to sell the home to somebody making a hundred percent area median incomes. We're struggling with that. We're actually pushing back with the city and they've not been very receptive about that. So that's been a bit of a problem. Um, about, I'm going to guess here, about sixty of the hundred and twenty-five are homes where there was a demolition, so Mishdas placed a twenty-thousand-dollar lien on the property. So that's difficult to sell to somebody because I have to find a way to get that lien removed. So again, these, these properties are available, but they're not easy to sell because of these restrictions and these guidelines that both Mishdas and the city has put on them.
But they are available to a private citizen?
Ab- absolutely. Absolutely. We just, we have a builder, we just submitted the list to him just yesterday because he called, because he also couldn't find it on our website. We're in the middle, we changed everything, we moved to a new service provider and everything.
So your new website's Inova-Lab?
Inova-Lab. If you go to K C L A, it'll just redirect you, so.
Thanks.
Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. Just a quick comment and then one question, and that's really Commissioner Voorhees' comment. I agree with his concerns. I do want to say though that I think we don't want to use the term quasi-government agency here, even though I agree with your meaning, Commissioner, because the land bank is an actual government agency and there's things that are good to do that, you know, maybe we shouldn't be doing under the umbrella of an actual government agency. One of my, my, one question is really just about the, when you're working with private developers, you said that they keep all the profits, set the price, et cetera. So in those arrangements, how do you ensure the goal of affordability of the housing if the private developers are setting their their own pricing and profit margins?
Our goal as an agency is not to provide affordable housing. We have great nonprofit organizations that do that. So our, you know, our goal is economic development, to go back to the beginning. One of the biggest economic drains we have in our region right now is the lack of housing. So if a developer comes and can't put a house on a lot because they can't stick build it for a price, but they could buy a Champion home from us and do that, we think that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeldt. Dave, do we know the life expectancy of a modular? Is there a differential between regular onsite built product rather than than one that's brought in as a trailer? My concern is the long-term value of properties and that we don't build entities that are going to become problem communities down the road. Is there a life expectancy differential?
So I'm going to answer your question two ways. Number one, the house is actually built better than a stick-built house. The developer that we talked about, that I talked about in Muskegon, and I'll just tell you his name, he's comfortable, that's Dave Duzending from Duzending Homes, so operates out of Walker, builds million-dollar homes. He just toured the first three that we installed. His comment to me was, this is better than a stick-built house because it's built in a controlled environment, never saw, never saw, never saw the weather, it's better insulated, two-by-ten construction, so that's the one way, just the comment that I got from somebody in the industry. Number two, we, the guarantees that, the warranties that come with this house are the same warranties as any stick-built house, so it's exact same warranties. Michigan really lags behind when it comes to modular. I mean, in California, they're building million-dollar mansions using modular and have for years. So quality-wise, they're actually quite, we don't, we don't see any concern and the industry has not shown any concern. But understand modular is different from manufactured, and these are not manufactured homes.
My experience is, and why Michigan is probably is, that we've been pretty concerned about that, that, what's the shelf life of a non-onsite build?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Commissioner Cornick.
Thank you, Chair. David, how have these homes been received in the neighborhoods and neighborhood associations? Have you spoke to those people in the city and are they comfortable with?
Yeah, so-
120 vacant-
Sure. The first, the designs that we've put together are designs that are based on the design aesthetic that already exists in the neighborhood. So the one that we put up on Herrick Street Northeast is a ranch style and a cul-de-sac with all ranches.
Because every neighborhood in the city is different.
Understood. The one we put on Sigsbee is a big, tall, narrow farmhouse that meets all the rest of the design aesthetic in that neighborhood. The one we put on Cooper is a standard four-square with a big porch on the front. So from a design aesthetic, they literally match what's going on in that neighborhood and you actually couldn't even tell.
Thank you.
And that's been the purpose of this design book that we've worked on, so that we have a design that can fit in any neighborhood aesthetic.
Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I can't speak for what you are doing, but I, Commissioner Voorhees and Cornick, I can tell you that when I was the neighborhood president of the Princeton Neighborhood Association in Pele, we had a family that moved in with a modular home, and I got a lot of calls. And I challenge you, everyone doing this, to go through the neighborhood and pick out the one that is the modular home. There is actually no way you will know, and it's been there for 25 years. It looks beautiful. They've had no problems. Unfortunately, the husband has died, the wife was taking care of the home by herself, and you would be very, there's no way, you would never know it has not brought down the quality or the value of any of the homes around it. So I can speak highly of at least this particular one that went in in our neighborhood. It was very well received once it was there.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes. I totally support our private sector and want a more vibrant market for our private sector, but when we look at the lack of affordable housing, when we look at the middle class and poor people of our community being displaced, I'm glad that we have a few agencies out there that can bring some type of balance. And one agency or two isn't going to stop what's been going on in Grand Rapids, but that's one of the reasons I do support Inova Lab. But I have a question either for Wayman Britt and maybe to go today. When we talk about this being a government agency, even though Kent County Commission was part of the voting with the creation of the land bank, to my understanding that it isn't directly a Kent County government agency or organization like some of our other departments, so I was wondering if Wayman could weigh in on that.
It is not, yes. It is not a governmental agency. However, the board of commissioners approved the authorization for the land bank, so they established it via the laws of the state of Michigan.
Okay, and that's why sometimes we do have different terms for how we address what the land bank is, and I just wanted to get clarification on that, so I want to thank our Kent County Administrator, Wayman Britt, for that. Thank you.
Okay. I do have, I'm going to wrap up with some questions of my own. The Inova Lab?
Inova Lab, I'm sorry. I didn't come up with the name, it was a group thing.
That is a name change. That is still the Kent County Land Bank.
Yeah, it's a DBA.
And I heard you talk about doing projects in Muskegon and outside the county. How does, how do you, how does that square that a Kent County entity is doing projects outside of the borders of Kent County?
Simply the state land bank has come to us and has asked us to contract with them to help them because we, this is what we do. We do, we're already set up with the state to do financing, so the financing is already set up. We've already established the relationship with Champion Homes. It's on a fee-for-service basis. It doesn't affect our charter, it doesn't affect anything.
I guess I'm looking back to when the Kent County Land Bank was formed by this body, and I was on the board at the time, and I don't think anybody anticipated we would be doing projects outside of Kent County. Did you at the time? I mean, that certainly was never communicated. Did you say, was that, I know you were involved at the time, was that-
The day I took over, I didn't anticipate it either, but I also didn't anticipate the market that we're looking at right now and the concerns that we have at statewide level. So it's, again, it's a tool to deal with economic development and, you know, again, I, I can't, there's nothing in our charter that states that we can't do that. It's not draining anything from Kent County. I would think that to allow these tools that we have available for Kent County to still be here, but have our support come from outside Kent County would actually be a good thing.
As far as the new area that you're moving into, I certainly don't disagree that that's probably a good thing for the community. I guess my question is, is the land bank really the right entity to be doing it? And I noted in an article that was written by the Grand Rapids Business Journal on late June, you were quoted as saying, "Too many people have this mindset when they think of a land bank. They think of Detroit, they think of Flint, it's just holding blighted properties, and that's just not who we are and that, and not what we do," Allen said. And really, that's not what the land banks are designed to do. Is that really your position?
That's why-
It's not about blighted property?
It's not, and that's why I started with the slide, that that's not why the legislative-
Well, I can tell you that blighted property was about everything we were talking about back when this was passed, and I was on the board at the time. I pulled out my notes from that and that was a major item, and in fact, I went back and I looked, I supported it at the time, and I know that economic development is part of it too, but the blighted nature of the properties is what was prompting us to do this at the time. We had reports of a few blocks in the city of Grand Rapids that had several foreclosures on it, and we were trying to head off a scenario of what was going on in Flint at the time. And I did pull up the statute and I went so far as to look at the legislative history, and I do see in that legislative history that blight is a significant portion of why that statute was created. So to say it's nothing about blight, it just kind of floored me. And I, and I just wonder if we aren't doing exactly what this board asked this, your body not to do when we issued that report in May of 2017, which was one of our recommendations, was to avoid mission creep. Focus should remain on the central mission under which the Kent County Land Bank has operated since its inception, including addressing blighted and significantly depressed properties. So I guess that's more of a comment than a question to you, but to me, it just seems like we, what's going on now, albeit the good that it's bringing to the community, just seems like this is the wrong entity that should be doing that. I would also ask, in that report, we has, as one of our recommendations, and again, this is the report that was adopted by the board, property conveyance, as the housing market continues to improve, the Kent County Land Bank should not accept any properties from local units of government unless the property has first been made available at a public auction within the prior three years, unless there is a return to the 2009, 2010 rate of tax foreclosure activity, or unless there are special circumstances requested for consideration by the local unit. Are we, is the land bank adhering to that recommendation?
I believe that we are in that we're not, what has been a concern of some commissioners in the past was the process of the city acquiring the properties and then transferring them directly to the land bank. We're not doing that anymore. The properties that have come to the land bank, such as the 125 vacant lots throughout the city, the city has been, had offered for sale for many years, but again, because of title issues and whatnot, they were unable to sell them. So we, I believe that we're certainly following the spirit of that recommendation to not circumvent the auction process, so.
But it says that they should not accept any properties from a local unit of government unless that property has first been made available to the public auction.
I don't believe, have we, are we-
All the properties are going to the public house.
Right. We're not, we're not getting any of the properties from the city of Grand Rapids this year. We're helping them clear title. We're not taking any of those properties at all.
But are you following that recommendation?
I believe we are, yes.
In all respects? I mean, I know you said that about the city, but-
I can't, I can't think of an example where we're not.
Okay, all right.
I would also contend, Chair Saulfeldt, that the fact that, if the city would have, the fact that the city came to us and asked us to clear the title on these so that they could go to the affordable housing organizations for affordable housing is also what has happened with the tax foreclosures for all the years prior to the existence of this land bank. It's no difference. They, the city had always done that, that was a common practice that they did. There's nothing unusual with that. As well as, as well as working with the city to clear the lead out of these houses is something that both the city and the county red card courses have to do. The arson extenuating contingency with the city's request that do meet, to my estimation, is a spiritual recommendation.
Okay, thank you. I-
Additionally, we did not approach any other local unit as we did in years past and say, "Would you like help clearing?" That was, normally that was our practice, we did not do that based on that recommendation.
Okay.
Not something that we offered.
All right, thank you. I would just conclude by saying, I just think your statement that you made to the Grand Rapids Business Journal, when you say it's not, that you're not designed to do that in reference to the blighted properties, I just think that's 100% wrong. I mean, that is why this entity was created, we had a concern at the time, and that's also why we said at the time, and again, when we did this report, that we wanted to review this, this program every set of so many years. I think three years is the current recommendation, so 2020.
Mr. Chair-
Yes, absolutely.
You are correct. When we formed this back in 2009 is when the presentations were made and the board vote was taken. Blight was an issue in this city. Obviously, it was not a Genesee County level, a Wayne County level, it was an issue. Tax foreclosures were an issue. Well, as the market has improved, those issues still exist and we are still addressing them, but they are less of an issue, and we've, as a board and as an organization, have looked to, how can we meet the new needs of our community? And so we're not leaving those behind. We're not saying, "Oh, well, that's blighted, we don't do blight anymore." It's more an issue of, there's not as much blight for us to have to deal with, there's not as many tax foreclosures that we have to deal with, but there are other issues in this community where we can have a positive impact and fill a need that's not being met elsewhere. So I respectfully would say that while, you know, while we were not as focused on blight, there will always be blight in every community. There's just, that's a fact of life. And we will address it as it comes to our attention in the ways that we have available to us. But that shouldn't stop us from looking at, how else can we have a positive impact on our community? And that's what the board did through a strategic planning process. We took a lot of what the, of the recommendations that were made by this body and took them to heart and factored them into our new strategic plan and our new process. We're trying to get away from property ownership, therefore the 550 tax to a fee for service. Dave's correct. I didn't envision us providing services to other counties, but we found that other counties want to learn how we're doing things and want our help. And if we can do it without neglecting what we do here in Kent County, because Kent County will always be, first and foremost, what this land bank provides service to, and we can make a little revenue while doing that to support what we do here in Kent County. We believe that that's appropriate and valuable. A lot, a lot has changed, you know, this is a new, a new structure. Land banks are new. I mean, they're only, really only 15, 16 years old, and so there's a lot of evolution taking place, and we're trying to follow the evolution and really kind of stay ahead of the evolution so that we are providing value to our community.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. We'll move next to public comment, and I know we have a number of people who wish to address the commission this morning, so let me just say a few words before we get going. Of course, the commission encourages public comment, and we want to hear from everyone who wishes to speak. We, from our standing rules, a person may address the board on matters or issues which are relevant to the county government. The chair may disallow public comment that is unduly repetitious, not relevant to county government, or matters not under consideration by the board. The chair may limit the time each person is allowed to speak during public comment. However, the time for public comment may not be limited to less than three minutes. So as has been our policy for the past three years, public comment will be at three minutes. I or our corporate counsel sitting next to me will let you know when that time has been reached. You will receive a notice at the two-minute mark, so you have, you know, one minute to complete your comment. To make sure that everyone has a turn for public comment, we'd ask that you line up in the middle to, and then come to the podium, and we also have placed cards in the back where you can write your name and address to assist the county clerk with the meeting minutes. Please wait until your turn is up to come forward to address the commission. Last, just, there may be people here who want to speak on a variety of issues. Our rules ensure that everyone has a chance to speak on topics important to them, consistent with our standing rules. So with that, we'll begin public comment. I would ask anyone coming forward to state their name and address so that we can record it for the minutes.
Good morning. My name is Gemma, spells G E M A, last name Lo, L O W E, and I live on 669 Third Street Northwest here in Grand Rapids, Michigan. And I just want to state that, thank for everybody that is coming over here since eight in the morning on a Thursday. I think the time of this convene is probably not very inviting for people that works from eight to nine to five, so that's something that is not very inviting, so it is a matter of this body. So let me illustrate you on what the contract with ICE and how it's complicit in separated families here in Kent County. Since the past federal administration, when this contract was passed by you or this body, ICE found an effective way to use local authorities to detain people that look like me, like immigrants. There's an incentive for local agents to stop, to stop people on a traffic violation just based on, they may not have papers, right? Because there is money coming to the county because of this contract. So you know that besides a regular traffic violation ticket, you may have 85 more dollars per person for 72 hours plus other, you know, costs at the jail. So this is how the past administration could separate and deport more than 3 million people and 3 million families here in the United States. I know personally-
Ma'am, you're at, you're at your two minutes so far.
Thank you. I know personally kids that stay behind here with family separation. You know, today is the day that the court has given ICE to reunite 1,000, more than 1,000 kids aged five to 17, and they won't be able to do it. It's 1,000 in a day, it's not correct. Kent County, not ending the contract, you're being complicit with this inhumane behavior. I have 1,600 signatures from people that is telling you to end the contract. So please end the contract. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Zach Huyz. I drove in this morning from Ottawa County at 5:31 West 20th Street. And the reason why I felt it was important for me to speak this morning is I wanted to tell you and remind you that this issue, this contract with ICE, it doesn't just affect people in the Latino community, it affects people of color who look like me. I was adopted from South Korea when I was six months old. I didn't have a say in it, and my parents did do it the legal way, the correct way. But there are more and more Asian immigrants who are finding that their parents may not have completed the naturalization papers or may not have even begun the naturalization process. did do it the legal way, the, the correct way. Um, but there are more and more Asian immigrants who are finding that their parents may not have completed the naturalization papers or may not have, uh, even begun the naturalization process, and they just assumed that they were citizens of the United States. Um, in 2012, there was a, a Korean adoptee named Philip Clay, uh, who, because of a criminal record, was deported back to South Korea, where he did not speak the language. He didn't know anyone. Um, and yeah, 2012. This is not, um, an issue that just started a couple of years ago. This is a bipartisan problem. Um, and we need to be united on a bipartisan front to put an end to it. Because in 2017, last year, he killed himself by jumping off the 14th floor of his apartment building. Uh, he had no hope left. Uh, someone that looked just like me. Uh, people that looked just like everyone behind me, but it's just a reminder that, uh, this is tearing people's lives apart. It's sending them back to places they don't know, uh, languages they don't speak, people they've never met before, places they don't have jobs, where they don't have places to live. It's, it's inhumane.
Two minutes.
Thank you. And I, I just think about what would have happened if my parents had not gone through the proper steps to finalize my naturalization process. A couple of weeks ago, I had to, I finally had my parents dig up my, my papers, just to confirm that I can be in this country legally without having to worry about being deported. Um, and it's, and the fact is, it doesn't matter to, to some people that, that would like to see all immigrants deported. A couple of weeks ago, I was nearly run off, nearly run off the road by someone who, uh, then rolled down his window and, uh, called me a racial slur that I can't repeat here and, uh, sped off. And he didn't know that I was legal. He didn't know if I was illegal. He just knew that I wasn't, you know, the same color as him. He knew that I looked different. And that's the kind of fear that I live with and the people behind me live with, and everyone else that can't be in this building today, they live with.
Thank you. That's three minutes.
And so, I just, I want you to consider that, consider the people that are with you, your neighbors, your family.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Martha Box. I live at 7161 Orin Drive Southeast in Grand Rapids. I'm here today to support the urgent need to end ICE in our county jail, S-703 Ball. I ask each of you to recall the first image you saw of children separated from their parents and detained at the border, the fear, pain, confusion of where parents are and what will be next for them. These images still remain in my head every day as I kiss and hug and tuck in my own precious five and seven-year-olds at home. I can only think of the mothers and fathers that are not with their children for the sole reason they were not born in the United States. I did nothing to receive this privilege of being a white U.S. citizen. This privilege is not earned. This is the time for us, here in this room, to say the best way to make our community safer is to end the contract with ICE. The best way to make our community stronger is to keep families together. This is about sending the message to all Grand Rapids citizens that what is happening is morally wrong and that nothing good will result from maintaining a contract with ICE. I do not want my taxes to support family separation. Today, let's make it possible for Grand Rapids to be the next city, to be the leader of more cities to follow by ending the ICE contract and say, "We are a city who supports all families." The current contract with ICE does not reflect our core values of our community. Separating immigrant families is cruel at the border and in our own community. I do not want my friends and community members taken out of our community. We have the power today to take a stand against this atrocity and end the practice of holding ICE detainees in Kent, in our county jail. I don't want to be separated from my family, and I don't want that to happen to anyone in county, regardless of race or immigration status. Let's make a positive difference today through this powerful action by ending the ICE contract. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Susan Duesbury. I live at 453 La Grave. I'm here today to appeal to your hearts, not appeal to your fear, to end the contract with ICE. I've been a mother. I've been an elementary school teacher. I've been an instructor at Grand Valley. I'm now a counselor. I've seen what trauma does to people, whether it's, um, people I work with, or doctors, clergy, stayed-home moms. Everyone has some level of trauma in their life. Do we want to add to the trauma of people and have that moral, moral act on our hearts? My daughter's childhood friend, who graduated from City High, his parents came documented from Zambia. He was sent back to Zambia, um, just this year. He's never lived there, um, well, from the age of five. He knows barely how to speak the language. This is just immorally wrong. There is an international, um, convention called the Convention of the Rights of the Child that U.S. ratified many years ago. I invite you to investigate it. Last administration did not re-ratify it. This administration has not re-ratified it. Out of 196 countries around the world, America is the only country that has not re-ratified this convention, which says that children have a special need for support from trafficking, from imprisonment. And the reason I bring this up is because this is an international convention that each year, uh, countries make reports and report to this convention about. But because U.S. has not signed this convention, we are not held to this international law, which allows our government to do things as though imprison children, separate families, send back people who are doing no wrong in this country. So, what do we do on a local level? We say we are not going to stand for this anymore. Please, end your contract with ICE.
Two minutes.
It's not just that we don't want the blood on our hands. We don't want tears on our hands. It affects cultures. It affects society. It affects our future spending, if that comes down to dollars. We spend more money later on for people with addiction, for people who can't work, for people who have struggles within their families and leads to family trauma. It is just immoral. It is a human rights abuse, flat out. There is no other way to look at it. It is a human rights abuse. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
My name is Deirdre Cunningham, and I live at 1717 Linden Avenue, Southeast Grand Rapids. I'm here to tell you that you have more power over the matter of how ICE operates in our community than I do. And I want you to use that power to figure out how to do something about what ICE is doing to our friends and neighbors. I was recently involved in, um, supporting a man who was reunited with his three-year-old, who he was separated from in Texas after traveling here from Honduras. Um, he was separated from his three-year-old, and his three-year-old was held at Bethany Christian Services for three and a half months. Um, the pain that I experienced from the, they, and they were reunited, but just witnessing the pain that had occurred was devastating between these two. And they still hadn't been reunited with their mother, um, wife, and the, um, daughter, um, sister. And who knows when that will happen? And it, and that's just one out of thousands of people. Um, you know, they came to escape violence, and this is just one of thousands that were separated at the border, and many more that have been separated here, even at gunpoint in our own community. You're telling us that the contract is between the sheriff and ICE, um, and, but you're, you're the governing body of-
Two minutes.
-the sheriff. So, I want you to figure it out. Counties and cities all over the country are pulling out of their contracts with ICE. So, I ask you to follow their lead and do what it takes. Figure it out. Thank you. End the contract.
Thank you.
Hi. Uh, hi. My name is Max Kruger. I live at 9481, uh, 948, uh, Four Mile Road Northwest, Apartment 1B, Grand Rapids, Michigan. Um, I, I obviously, I care about this issue. Um, but there's some things I think have gone unstated. Um, what is the specifics? I got a lot of what's happening. Um, I could mention about how, uh, one of ICE's top lawyers was just convicted of, well, not convicted, just is being brought to court for stealing the identities of thousands of immigrants. I could bring up the point that a number of ICE, uh, officers have been arrested for sexually abusing the children, but, um, it's not really my place to talk about that. Instead, I'm going to devote the rest of my time to making you listen to a direct recording of the children crying, so. have a conductor there, 'cause he's a represent, so reprehensible human being. Just to be aware of the kind of caliber of people that agency employs.
Two minutes.
I know it's difficult to tell, but a lot of these people, um, when translated, are trying to plead for relatives, including one point in this conversation where, uh, a girl keeps asking for her aunt and is promptly ignored.
Thank you.
Hi. My name is Tanisha Bigay, um, and I'm a resident of Kent County. And I wanted to present you all with a check today for $18,000. Um, we're here to demand that, we want ICE out of 703 Ball Avenue. Um, last year in 2017, Kent County actually made $17,935 off of trafficking 185 people. So, Jim, we made this out to you, but you can share it. Um, you can write your names on it, 'cause we hold each one of you responsible personally for this detainment of ICE. Please. Um, we also, Jim, you said in a statement, um, to MLive that you don't have, um, any say in, in, um, detaining ICE, um, or ICE, ICE's detainment of immigrants, but we're wondering why you profit off of it? And, um, so this is just a visual representation of that, um, and we hope that you ask yourselves if it, if it's worth it. So, is it worth it to separate 185 families and to take 185 community members of our community out of Kent County? So, yeah, there you go. Enjoy. I'll leave you with it.
You're welcome.
My name is JR Martin. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids, which is on Anishinaabe land. And I'm here this morning to join members of my community in demanding an immediate end to this contract between Kent County and ICE. So, I would ask commissioners here today to imagine being on the right side of history and joining counties and local governments across the country who have been ending contracts very much like this one. As people have said, we know the contract is technically with the sheriff's department. There's no need for further education on this point. The county commission could effectively end this contract by refusing to approve the sheriff's budget. So, what people want is for commissioners to make a public statement in favor of doing that and in favor of cutting ties with ICE. And we want this because ICE is a white supremacist organization that kidnaps people from their homes and takes them from the street and separates them from their families and their communities, not just at the border, but right here in Kent County. We can also acknowledge that these traumas of separation and incarceration are not new. In some ways, they're not unique to ICE. They're what prisons do every day. At the same time, if we're interested in taking actual steps in a better direction, right here, right now, in Kent County, and taking steps toward justice, then it should be really easy for us to acknowledge that even if these crises aren't new, ICE itself is very new. ICE was founded in March 2003. I am older than ICE is, and most people in this room are older than ICE. So, we've all lived through a past without it, and I think most of us in this room know that a future without ICE is not just an ethical vision or a hope. It is an imminent possibility. And so, in the meantime, I would ask you to listen to members of your community and respect their need for safety and end this contract now. We do not want ICE in Kent County.
End the contract.
My name is Amy Carpenter. I live in Kent County. Um, I'm with G.I. Rapid Response to ICE. We get calls every week from people, um, which means I know that you're making money every week, because there are people who were picked up while driving for a faulty brake light, um, or something small, and because they don't have a license, um, which we are in partnership, working on getting licenses for all, um, because they don't have a license, they're held, they're put on a hold for ICE, and you profit all that, off of the, all of that. So, we've written up the language for you, and I'll read it to you now. This is what we'd like you to sign. "We, the Kent County Board of Commissioners, do hereby declare that ICE Immigration and Customs Enforcement is no longer welcome in Kent County," and that "The Kent County Sheriff's Department is no longer authorized to work with ICE or remain in contractual agreements with ICE. Be it declared that ICE is separating families in Kent County, which causes all manner of poor outcomes, such as increased poverty, exploitation, and trauma for our parents and children. As Kent County Commissioners, we cannot stand by while this happens in our county. The Kent County Correctional, Correctional Facility is paid by ICE to hold immigrants who have been brought into not, uh, brought in on non-immigration-related offenses. It is morally wrong for our county to accept any money for our role in kidnapping members of our own community. We have listened to the public comment regarding this issue, as well as the actions of other local governments and businesses across the nation, and it is clear that our voters want the commission to show leadership and end this contract. We are willing to step forward and be those leaders. Therefore, we, the Kent County Board of Commissioners, will immediately release a statement denouncing ICE and declaring our intent to end the contract. We will submit a motion to end the contract to the next commission meeting agenda and all agendas following that until the motion passes, and we will, we will do everything in our power, including withholding county monies for the Kent County Sheriff's Budget and refusing approval of future budget to end this contract. Signed, Kent County Board of Commissioners." We will leave this for you.
I thought we did all the work for you. My name is Coco Chakowski. I'm a resident of Anishinaabawaki, which my genocidal ancestors christened Kent County, in which you continue to illegitimately exercise power over. I want to talk to you personally. Um, I hope that you're grateful that we're here. I hope that you're grateful that we're calling you out for this and giving you a chance to do something about it. I, I know that you guys are probably used to being disrespected and feeling, you know, despised- are probably used to being disrespected and feeling, you know, despised. A lot of people here are not content with you, with your very existence in this chamber. Clearly, your power is illegitimate because you need these people here to protect you. Uh, so I'm sure you're used to that. But we're giving you not just a chance, but it's written out for you. We've done the work for you. You can take one tiny, tiny, tiny step towards holding yourselves accountable for the unimaginable harm that you have caused personally, every single one of you, by not doing something about this, anything, anything at all. The labor that's gone into this, the emotional labor, the physical labor, the cost, the time, us being here, even though we have to work, right? Like someone said before, this is not an accessible thing for us. You can do the littlest, tiniest thing to take a step towards accountability, to not be despised, to not be disrespected, to not exercise this stupid authority that you have. You're welcome.
My name is Denise Langley. I live at 4482 Kyners Road. Before he played the recording that was very, very difficult to listen to, Max said the statement that he could go on about the, um, human rights abuses committed by ICE. Because he ceded his time over, I will actually speak to that. ICE has a long history of human rights abuses. They have violence and sexual assault rampant in almost every facility. Even the Office of the Inspector General conceded this in their report in December, um, when they did their inspections. And that was only six, seven months ago. They are deficient in several areas: basic facilities, adequate medical care, use of excessive force, and dehumanizing abuses. This violence is committed daily, and it's done against people who lack violence in their own country because they thought they were better than that. I want to know, does the Kent County Sheriff's Department allow these abuses to happen to its inmates? Do you support rape, violence, and assault against the people that you are detaining here? If not, why are you partnering with an organization who does this? Why are you knowingly sending community members into that risk, into that environment? Even if they do come back, the trauma and the abuse has already been inflicted and the damage has been done. If ICE were a foreign entity, we would slap sanctions on them. We would refuse to do business with them. We would completely cut off ties. We would call them out and publicly humiliate them for their human rights abuses. The only difference is ICE is not foreign. They were created and are supported by the U.S. government. They commit rape and assault every day on our soil and in our towns. And this is not a border problem. The focus has been on the southern borders, and this is not a border problem. This is everyone's problem. You need to stand up and do what is right. And regardless of your politics or opinions on immigration policy, this goes far beyond that. This is not about how you feel about immigration. This is not about whether you are Democratic or if you are Republican. This is about the fact that Kent County is partnering with terrorist organizations. And anyone who supports the contract is openly supporting and condoning their dehumanizing activities. All of you know this to be true, whether you want to say it or not. And if you are comfortable with that, you maybe should take a long, hard look at your moral compass because it is facing in the wrong direction. Thank you.
Morning. My name is Kieran Leesk. Um, I'm a resident of Kent County and have been for twenty-one out of my twenty-three years of age. Um, I request that you remove ICE from 703 Ball Avenue Northeast. Um, I am a first-generation American on my father's side. I have a parent who is not in, a citizen of the United States of America. I am privileged, incredibly privileged, that we are white, that we were at least middle-class through most of my life, and that my father's still here. I never had to come home worrying my dad would not be in the house. My dad traveled for work. I didn't have to worry about him boarding a plane. Um, I feel incredibly privileged, and it is so, so sad that I have been able to just not worry. I know my family's going to be together, and other people don't. Uh, people much younger than me, children and adolescents, have to worry every day that their mom or dad won't be at home, simply because they are people of color. So I beg you to end the contract with ICE, allow everybody to be able to come home and not worry that their mom and dad is there, and just look inside yourselves. Because I'm sure all of you are just as privileged, and if not more privileged than I am. Speak for the people that don't have a voice.
My name is Raina Cook. Um, this is my daughter Twila. And we live on the west side of Kent County. And I just want to talk about our neighbors a little bit. Uh, we have a very diverse neighborhood on the west side. There are people of all colors, uh, but most of us are poor. The one thing that I can say, though, about being a poor white person is that I don't have to have concerns about how I'm going to be treated because of the color of my skin. I see a lot of white faces here, like, a lot, disproportionately so. And I know you all know that. And I hope that you all recognize the privilege that comes with having that white skin. And the privilege of having that white skin is that we have a louder voice, we command more respect. All of these things are just given to us. We did not earn them, as someone said earlier. These are things, though, that we can use to our advantage and have a voice for people who are, maybe they're undocumented, and they aren't able to speak up for themselves for fear of deportation, being separated from their families. This contract with the Kent County Corrections is something that you are complicit in, something you do have control over despite your protestations against that. If you fund, if you fund this budget, you are funding this exact action. Use your privilege to make a change in that. You have that power. You are choosing not to exercise that power. Our neighbors are people of all colors. And yet, something that my children have said to me before that's really, really sad. Um, one time, my daughter was saying that her family isn't able to go to things like some of the protests that we attend, some of the actions, because her parents are not documented. And they have serious fears that they will be separated from their family. These are friends of my children. And they were told that in confidence. Please, you know, like, please don't tell anybody, but my parents aren't documented here. They're students in our schools. My children have also said things to me, like how when they, um, see somebody of color in the neighborhood, they feel like they have to just, like, be extremely welcoming so that they don't think they're like every other white person that judges them based on their skin color. And I don't think anybody realizes how difficult that can be for children to maybe walk around and not know if the people they're talking to have serious, um, prejudices against them. And that's part of our privilege, is making sure that we are welcoming in our community, making sure that our community members are safe. And ending this contract is one way that you all have the power to do that.
End the contract. End the contract now.
Hi, I'm Sarah Doherty. I live at 1922 Key Hill Avenue Southeast in Grand Rapids. Um, I come from a family, um, of white folks, of mostly middle-class folks. Um, my family tells stories with pride about the ways that our, our folks came here, immigrated here. I have survivors of the potato famine in Ireland. I have people who came over for economic opportunity from Sweden in my ancestry. And I have, uh, German folks who were escaping gut-wrenching poverty after the First World War. Um, and the story that we tell about my great-grandfather coming over on a ship under a garbage pile, hiding in a locker, sneaking into the country to find his fortune here, that's, that's a story that we told with pride. And I hear stories about people who are coming here now for similar reasons, about violence and poverty, uh, and gut-wrenching conditions in the places that they're from, largely, I've, I've come to understand, be- because of destabilizing actions that the U.S. government has taken around the world, um, and treated like they're less than human for being here, when there's almost no way for people to come through, come here through the, through the avenues that were legal or didn't have anything to do with legality that my ancestors came with, that many, may, maybe, maybe many of your ancestors came with. Um, and I've also been thinking a lot about the people who were left behind in my family in Germany and, um, and what their complicity might have been like, uh, and whether or not they were good Germans, um, especially. And I'm, I'm thinking about now, that now as a white person here. Um, and I would like to invite you to think about that, um, as people who have some opportunities-
Two minutes.
-to take moral leadership, um, to take practical leadership in maybe not dismantling all of white supremacy and xenophobia, but taking a tiny step to make things that are so terrible for so many of the people that we love and care about. And maybe you don't know, but maybe you could get to know people who are your people, our people. Um, so please, please, I would like to invite you to get ICE out of Kent County and end the contract. Whatever you need to do, end the contract. Thank you.
My name is Jeff Smith. I also am a resident of Kent County, particularly on the northeast side of Grand Rapids. Um, as other people have said, I, I also work with the Grand Rapids Rapid Response to ICE. And, um, one of the things that we've known since we started in February of 2017 is that there are literally hundreds of families who have been impacted, affected by ICE directly, that we know about, that have been reported. It's probably many more times that the case. Um, and one thing we try to do is really center the voices and lived experiences of the people who are affected by, uh, the ICE detentions, the ICE arrests, the ICE raids, the ICE terrorism, because that's what these people experience. I can name people like Juana and Marisol, and Daisy, and Jorge, and a whole slew of people who have contacted us, um, because a family member has been taken by ICE in the last year and a half in this, in this community. Most of the people who have been taken are the primary income earners. So all of a sudden, now you have spouses with children who have no source of income. They can't pay their bills. They can't pay the rent. They can't even buy groceries. So many of the people behind me and other folks, we raise money to support them. We do that human thing, that decent thing, that just thing, that's what people should do for people who are suffering. You could do a whole lot with a whole lot less effort by choosing to end the damn contract now. Now. It will not cause you any discomfort at all. None, not one bit. Last week, I met with a family who their husband had been taken, to bring them some, some money to support them. Two small children, and the mother was pregnant. So here's two kids, four and six years old. The mother was pregnant, doesn't know whether or not they're ever going to see their father, their husband again, because ICE picked him up. Even for people like that to even be able to possibly, have the possibility of seeing their family members, the courts require them to pay five to seven thousand dollars on bond. They're not like typical bonds-
Three minutes.
-the Russos have to experience. So I'm asking you to, again, do the decent thing, the human thing, the just thing, the compassionate thing, which would be to end that contract immediately. You need to do that. Because we're going to keep coming back. We ain't stopping you, alright?
Morning. Morning. My name is Alex Kelly. Most of the points I could make were already made pretty damn well by everyone who's come before me, and probably made well, pretty darn well by the, by the, quite a few people behind me. But I'm still going to reiterate a few of them. First of all, we, we missed you, we missed you last night, Jim. We were hoping to talk with you, but we can talk with you now. Yeah, we had a nice, nice party in front of your lawn. First of all, every single one of you is personally complicit in the human trafficking this year of one hundred and eighty-five people. You know, I know we don't take much stock in international law around here, but that is one of the most serious crimes you can commit. You know, each, you know, it's, the couple of you, I'm reiterating these points because the couple of you that I communicated with seem to not get it. It's pretty simple. I think it's willful condescension on your part. But, let's re- so, you, you say you don't have the power to directly end the contract. Fine. But like people said before me, you know, make, make a statement today saying you will not approve any budget that the sheriff proposes until this contract is ended. Yes. You know, that's not, that might not be popular because a lot of white folks seem to use law enforcement here as customer service and want that funded. But you're here to do the right thing and not the popular thing. Yeah. You know, there, there are over sixteen hundred other people who agree with me, and that's just the people who saw this petition link on social media and who we talked to. It will keep coming back until, you know, until you end this contract. Like- You say it's complicated, like, for example, Jim Talon was communicating with me last night, it's complicated. It's not complicated. You end this, end this contract, or, you know, we'll keep coming back. You know, if you're going to disrupt my immigrant mother and sister's lives, we're going to disrupt yours. I'm not going to thank you until you end this contract, so I'll let these people speak.
My name is Martha Cooper. I'm a resident of Grand Rapids. Um, I want to speak to, uh, I'm not going to be able to do this without a motion because I really want to just call out racism. That's what we're dealing with here. What I have seen in my life is, we're talking politics, okay? I'm not talking one or the other side, but racism. We're now faced with, we started out with a, a non-problem, and instead of solving it when Bush was president and he was for solving the problem of immigration, it didn't get taken care of. So neither party has been genuine about solving this problem. Instead, they've made a problem worse. And then they injected a whole lot of racism into it. And as I remember during the campaign, he was going after the criminals, but now it's not. Now he's going after children. This has changed. We all know it. It changed. Now what we have, it's a strong word, but with our, with our country, my country, which I cannot stand for the pledge anymore. I can't. My country has a pogrom going on. They're not going to be content until they start going after documented people. So that is not anything about jobs or all this narrative that they're giving. This is racism. Racism! You are not prosecuting, just, we know what's going on without licenses. You can stop people. You can charge them. You can deport them. We are all upset because we see children in, in, in cages. But we're not upset because a child gets his door kicked in and he's crying in his bed. I, I know a woman who provides services-
Two minutes.
-for, for children who have had trauma. I knew her before the election. I can understand what her, her job must be like now. And we're paying for this! And people are making money off of this, and it's nothing but racism! That's what this is! You are responsible for paying with our tax dollars for cells to put people of color in because of a political narrative coming out of the top of this country that is ugly, un-American! I am sick of my country, and I want this county and this city! The city wouldn't vote for treating all people like equals! And now you all have a contract, and yes- all people like equals. And now you all have a contract. And yes, even if the sheriff, I understand you explained that, but you do write the check. The check is sitting up front. And you're paying for racism. That's what you're paying.
My name is Karen Myers. I live in Kent County. This country is run by immigrants. The city is run by immigrants. Unless you're a Native American, you are an immigrant at some point or have been. I would like you to imagine what Grand Rapids will look like if all of the immigrants are gone. All of the people who run and work in restaurants and other businesses, who work in our agriculture, I don't think you would like it very much. These people are now being terrorized. Many of them are afraid to leave their homes, afraid to go to their jobs. Um, as the people from Grand Rapids Rapid Response to ICE already said tonight, today, they are out on a weekly basis helping people who, parents separated from their children. We have seen what is going on at the borders and that is horrifying, but it's happening right here in Kent County. And, you know, I know that one of you said to one of your constituents that, well, it's, they're getting, they're, they're getting picked up if they've done something for a criminal offense. So, you know, innocent people are not being picked up. That's bull. Because people are being picked up for minor things like drive, not having a driver's license, having a broken taillight. Things that are extremely minor offenses that I would probably get away with and would not be put in jail. And you're making money off it. This has happened before in this country. Um, and it's happened in other countries. And I don't think I need to spell out for you where it happened and what it's like. Where people of a specific race or religion were targeted, were jailed, were sent to camps. All you have to do is end this contract that you are making money off of. End it. It, it's not a hard thing to do. And it would help the people in this community who are terrified now and terrorized.
By you.
By you. Yes. So just end the contract.
End the contract!
End the contract!
You are terrorizing our neighbors!
Um, um, I'm not going to, I don't know if I'm going to be able to stay through this meeting. Um, all people of color go through in the United States of America and they don't come to the commission every week. People are coming because babies are being ripped from their mother's breast. And we have to stop that and we can't be complicit in it. And we do have some power and influence on the contracts. We were part of the initial initiation. I wasn't on the board there. And I wonder when I got on the board, when people get grants from different organizations, federal and state, why we would vote on it? You know, like, wow, they're giving them money. You know, I wasn't here with ICE's contract, but now I understand why we do vote on that. Because we have to protect the public interest. And this is the public. So I have, I have some things to say to the commissioners. Um, I know I'm working with some of the most distinguished, intelligent people that I've ever worked with. And I don't see one that's a bigot. I don't see one that's racist. And if I got the nerve to walk around here and sign this, I definitely would be the first to call you out. But there does come a time where we lack the wisdom, understanding. And God has put us here to continue to learn as we go. It's hard to believe your country can do wrong if your great grandparents were not slaves in this country.
Two minutes.
If your great grandparents were not the ones who were Japanese Americans who ran to help at Pearl Harbor Base because they were neighbors, but they got shot dead and later were put in jail. It's hard to believe your country can do wrong. It's hard to believe your country doing wrong when they rip a baby and send a one-month-old to court without paying a one-month-old. And that baby doesn't look like you, it's hard for you to believe your country can do something wrong. ICE is being misused by our President Donald Trump, period. And we cannot be a part of that. At the same time, I ask for the public to respect our law official. These young, these men here are doing their job. If a terrorist came in here and started shooting and he didn't shoot towards the commission, he shot towards this crowd, these'd be the first men to give their life. So we have to respect law enforcement. We have to teach our children. I read a book called Animal Farm, Pig Farm or Animal Farm in the sixth grade. And it was about the people becoming like the oppressors they were fighting against. And we cannot allow hate to come in and try to conquer hate with hate. I'm a Motown fan, a Marvin Gaye fan. Only love can conquer hate. And we all need to understand, we're at a point that we do need to hear public comment. We need to open up some good conversations and bring this to a peaceful end. I do love my country, but I admit it has done wrong. It once was a law that said I was three-fifths a human being. So that's how I look at the law.
We're over the three minutes.
I'm totally done today. But, um, let's continue to work together. And I respect the public for coming out, letting us hear that this moment in American history, um, we have a chance to be on the right side of history.
Do it!
End the contract!
Good morning. My name is Erica Van Dyke. I live in the Heritage Hill neighborhood of Grand Rapids and I work in the city of Wyoming. Um, and I'm here this morning, um, to just talk about a family that I work with in my, in my job capacity. I'm a family resource coordinator. So it's my job to work with families who are affected by these issues that we're talking about this morning. Last week I called one of the moms from my building to check in, you know, see how she's doing this summer. And she told me that her husband had been stopped that morning. Um, he had been picked up. He, and she was fairly sure that he would be soon deported. Um, and so immediately it became my job to figure out what do we, what do we do in this situation? This mom has, um, a first grader and a fifth grader, um, in our schools. And now her, as, as some of the other, um, community members have talked about, now her, um, breadwinner is gone, right? She doesn't have anyone that's going to be able to provide. Our community's stepping up, right? Our community's stepping up right now. We're showing up at these meetings. Um, we're organizing ourselves. We're making sure that this mom, um, has food for the next, for the next weeks. We're making sure that her light bill gets paid. We're making sure that she's going to have rent money while she figures out what she's going to do. I took her to a food bank, um, a couple days later and we're just checking in, you know, talking with her. And she told me, you know, my littlest daughter, her name is Lesby, Lesby, um, couldn't sleep last night. She hasn't been sleeping. She keeps asking where her dad is. Um, and she said, and I don't know what to do. I don't know what to tell her, um, because I don't know what's going to happen. And I didn't know what to tell her either. Um, I didn't know how to tell her that it was going to be okay because we don't know if it will be. And this is a mom, um, and a dad that came here because they have, you know, they have young kids, um, that want to go to school. They're trying to send them to school. They want them to be okay. Um, and they're having to make decisions between being able to feed their families, right? Being able to keep them safe, um, staying where they are or, you know, coming here and trying to, trying to have more options for their families. These are, um, these are families that are strong. They're, um, they're brave. They're fighters. These are the kind of families that we want in our communities. These are the families and the kids that we want to be supporting. And so you have an opportunity, right? As a lot of our commenters have been saying, you have an opportunity here to make these decisions and to use your power. Um, and that's powerful. We've seen other cities in the United States making these choices, making these choices to be, to be with our immigrants, um, to be with our friends and our family members. And that's important. You have this opportunity and I want to really encourage you therefore, um, to end, to end our Kent County contract with ICE and be better, be better for our city and for our families. Thank you.
Hello. I'm Ryan Hagerman. I live 509 Lafayette Avenue Northeast. All I want to do with my three minutes is to just ask you, Betsy Melton, will you sign our commitment to ending this contract?
This is a public comment. It's not a time to get response from the commissioners.
Howard, answer the question, Howard. Answer the question.
Answer the question!
Howard!
We're all too complicit.
This, public comment is not intended to be a period where you ask questions of the commissioners.
Sign the contract!
I'd like to hear from Betsy.
I think Betsy answered by herself.
Clearly you all did.
Does she allow to speak under?
The whole world is watching.
We might want to explain it.
This, this is not a fair, this is not fair.
Public comment, public comment is for us to receive comment. Public comment is for us to receive comment.
Violence against families in our community! Sign the contract!
Uh, Emily Brief, would you commit to signing this commitment?
Public comment is for the commission to receive comment. If the commission wishes to discuss something that comes later in the agenda.
Oh, wait.
Matt Coleman, will you sign?
I'll comment at the appropriate time and the immediate.
Howard, answer the question, Howard!
Howard. Harold Mast, will you sign? You're not signing at this time?
I'm not going to sign.
That's not signing.
You are complicit!
Jim Talon, will you please sign this commitment? It's the smallest step you can take. I have a Sharpie right here.
You can stand up or?
Roger Morgan, will you sign our commitment?
You're at two minutes.
Ed Vonck, will you sign our commitment? Harold Hennessy, will you sign this commitment?
Complicit.
Diane Jones, will you sign this commitment?
Complicit.
Linda Howell, will you sign this commitment?
Complicit.
Complicit!
Jim Saulfeld, will you sign this commitment?
Coward, coward, coward!
Wayman Prebret, will you sign this commitment? Mandy Bolter, will you sign this commitment?
Simply yes or no?
Stan Stack, will you sign this commitment? Are you smiling because you're gonna sign it or are you smiling because you're not?
Or are you smiling because you're so far removed that this is not?
David Bukowski, will you sign this?
You're at three minutes.
Dan Kordnick, will you sign this? Harold J. Voorhees, will you sign this?
Sorry, your time is up.
Stan Ponstein, will you sign our commitment? Tom Antor, will you sign our commitment? Kim Perry, will you sign it?
Your time is up.
Complicit!
Thank you for showing your commitment and who you really stand up for.
Well, first I ask everyone's forgiveness. I suffer from very severe social anxiety. This is very difficult for me. My name is Thomas Caballeros. I live on 456 Netherfield Comstock Park. Um, and you wouldn't know by looking, I wouldn't guess by looking at me, but my dad was an illegal, undocumented illegal immigrant from Guatemala. He was a child soldier in the Guatemalan Civil War, fighting on behalf of the government. According to him, the first time he shot someone was at age 15. Um, a few years later, he fled to the United States, undocumented, became a migrant worker. And he was legalized in the now famous Reagan amnesty, you know? The one act of, that Reagan did that I think a lot of his, you know, posthumous supporters seem to forget. Um, and, you know, I, I have benefited enormously from being born, from being born in this country. You know, for all this country's flaws, I really won the lottery by, by being born on this side of the border and not in a war-torn village in Guatem, in rural Guatemala, as my dad was. And if I had been given his, if I'd been given his lot in life, I don't know where I'd be. You know, if I, I may not even be alive, given my own disability. Um, and, you know, obviously everybody here has said, you know, why it's important to end the contract. I'll just remind you guys, really, I know that you, you might say it's up to the sheriff, but really, if you guys just do issue a non-binding, if you just sign something, if you just say anything, you have to know the sheriff's going to take anything you say seriously. People try to please the people who write their paycheck. That's a pretty elementary aspect of life. So now is your time to take the initiative. You know, now is your time to sign. Now is your time to really establish yourself in, in history for this, if nothing else. Because really what else are any of us, what are any of you, any of us going to be remembered for? Um, with that, I'll take my seat.
Yes! My name is Sergio Cida Reyes. I am a Kent County resident. Um, I'm a volunteer with Movimiento Cuesta Chao. So wanted to speak to you, uh, today about, uh, about your leadership and your responsibility as elected officials. Um, you might have seen in the news that there was a, a recent, uh, court ruling allowing a, a lawsuit against our current administration, uh, the president to, um, to stop the profiting of our, his prof, of making profit off the presidency. And so there's, there's, there's people in government making bold moves that are illegal and historically illegal. And, and if they, and these people are willing to, to take office and, and take action to do illegal things, I, I encourage you to, to take action, to do something that's right today. Um, I had, uh, I had a statement prepared and I wanted to share some of the points about how people that are entered detention facilities are being treated. Detainees are subject to violence, harassment, sexual abuse, and assault. It has been well documented by many sources, including the Government Office of Inspector General, OIG. Overall, we identify problems that undermine the protection of, of detainees' rights, their human treatment, uh, their humane treatment, and the provisions of a safe and healthy environment. And there's multiple quotes about that. Over fourteen, uh, over 1,400 complaints have been filed by, by detainees between 2012 and 2016 for sexual, sexual abuse alone. However, the DHS OIG stated they received 33,000 complaints between 2010 and 2016 for multiple abuses in detention centers. Detainees, detainee deaths have spiked due to substance, uh, substandard care. In the 15 months period between December 2015 and 20, uh, and April 2017, 15 immigrants died in ICE custody, most due to lack of urgent medical care. These are not, these are not statistics. They are people. They are mothers, they are fathers, sisters and brothers, community members who are working and raising their families. The Kent County Sheriff's Department is sending members of our community into these dangerous conditions. These, this needs to stop immediately. Um, I want to encourage you to, to stop passing the buck. It's your responsibility as elected official. We can't, I want to thank Commissioner Robert Womack. That, that, that is leadership. When you see something wrong, don't, don't hide behind the rules. Don't hide behind official policies. Do what's right. You're going to be sitting, you're going to be in pictures and textbooks with your faces right now as people are asking you if you were going to sign the contract. And kids, your grandkids are going to be looking. Uh, your sons, daughters are going to be asking, uh, what you did and why didn't you sign, or how, why did it take you that many months? Because we're going to be here until you sign the contract. As a matter of fact, we're going to sit in this afternoon, this morning, until you sign the contract. We're not leaving.
ICE out of Kent County!
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 Right.
ICE out of Kent County!
ICE out of Kent County. 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 ICE out of Kent County.
What do we want?
End the contract.
When do we want it?
Now.
What do we want?
End the contract.
When do we want it?
Now.
What do we want?
End the contract.
When do we want it?
Now.
What do we want?
End the contract.
When do we want it?
Now.
ICE out of Kent County.
We're gonna take a temporary suspension from the meeting since we're out of order.
Bukowski?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Breve?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Stack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Morgan?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes. Motion passes. We move to the resolutions, which are Agenda Item Number Eight, and for the first one, I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I would move Resolution 72618-52. It's the 2018 Senior Middle Age Fund Budget Amendment, a good amendment, and from the Administrator's office.
Is there, is there support by Commissioner Antor? Any questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is roll call vote. I'll call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 72618-52, Commissioner Skaggs, Commissioner Corndyke?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Abstained due to my conflict of interest.
Talan?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Breve?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Stack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Jones?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, one abstention, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 72618-52 is adopted.
Thank you. We move to Eight B, and I call on Commissioner Breve.
Thank you, Chair. I move Item Number Fifty-three of today's date, the Comprehensive Planning and Budgeting Contract, the amendment for PFAS funding for 2017 from the Health Department.
Support. Support by Commissioner Corndyke. Questions or comments on this item?
Chair, real quickly?
Commissioner Antor?
Thank you. Just had a question for IT. I'll, I'll address them with about the software costs, and I'll address that privately.
Okay. Any other questions? I see none. This is a roll call vote. I'll call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 72618-53, Commissioners Skaggs, Corndyke?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Breve?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Stack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Jones?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have eighteen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 72618-53 is adopted.
Thank you. We move to Resolution Eight C, and I call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. I move Resolution Fifty-four of this date, 72618, the amendment to Section 701 of the Kent County Animal Control Regulations.
Support by Commissioner Breve. Questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is not a roll call vote, so all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move to Resolution Eight D, and I call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you, Chair. I move Resolution Fifty-five, which is the designation of CDG monies. I move that resolution.
Support by Commissioner Breve. Questions or comments on this resolution? Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. I would just like to disclose that I'm a voluntary board member on the Fair Housing Center of West Michigan.
Will you be?
And I still will be supporting this.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. I see none, so this is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you. On the motion to adopt Resolution 72618-55, Commissioners Skaggs, Corndyke?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Abstained.
Ten minutes.
Talan?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Breve?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Stack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Jones?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays, one abstention. The motion passes. Resolution 72618-55 is adopted.
Thank you. Resolution Eight E, I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you. I move that resolution, which is accepting some money from the state for purchase of some additional parkland. I move Resolution.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 72618-56, Commissioners Skaggs, Corndyke?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Breve?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Stack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Jones?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 72618-55 is adopted.
Thank you. Resolution Eight E, I will call on Commissioner Mast.
Thank you. I move that resolution, which is accepting some money from the state for purchase of some additional parkland. I move Resolution.
Support.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 72618-56, Commissioners Skaggs, Corndyke?
Yes.
Womack?
Yes.
Bukowski?
Yes.
Talan?
Yes.
Hennessy?
Yes.
Melton?
Yes.
Mast?
Yes.
Breve?
Yes.
Coleman?
Yes.
Voorhees?
Yes.
Ponstein?
Yes.
Stack?
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter?
Yes.
Commissioners Jones?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
Antor?
Yes.
Vonck?
Yes.
Chair Saulfeld?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen yays, zero nays. The motion passes. Resolution 72618-56 is adopted.
Thank you. We move to Agenda Item Number Nine, which is public comment. This is a one-minute public comment. Is there any public comment? I do not see any, so we will move to Agenda Item Ten, which is reports. Are there any reports today? I am not seeing any. Commissioner Talan?
Just mentioned, the VDA didn't meet last month, so no report.
Okay. Commissioner Bukowski?
Thank you, Chair. Just to report, the friend of the court advisory committee did meet, and we continue to monitor the results of the community task force. I continue to advocate on Commissioner Voorhees's idea of friend of the family to help folks navigate that system. Good things are happening. The Responsible Parenting Program is up and running. Again, the, the main thing is growing the partnerships with workforce development organizations in town to help parents learn their responsibilities of supporting their children and then, you know, being able to find income and, and make that happen. So, good things happening at the front of the court, but we continue to monitor that. We will, we've asked for more data, and so in a couple months, my report will be longer. Thank you.
Commissioner Stack?
Thank you, Chair. Just a brief report on the developments at the Lake Shore Regional Entity. The negotiations with the folks at Beacon Health Services continue. We've had several sessions. We met again yesterday, and we'll meet again next week with them on a face-to-face to iron out the terms of the contract with them. We are optimistic that it is going very well, and that we're gonna end up with a partnership with them that will be very supportive of what we want to accomplish here with our behavioral health system. We'll know more by the end of next week, what the more specific terms of that contract will look like, but we are, we're very optimistic. In the meantime, we have continued to have the conversations with the state. We began talking to them yesterday. Those conversations are supportive of this direction. They have been brought up to speed on the current performance of the 2018 fiscal year, and still no concerns, no worries, so we're pressing ahead with our full support.
Thank you. Commissioner Corndyke?
Thank you, Chair. Just like to report that the June-over-June numbers at the airport, passenger activity increased up seventeen point four-nine percent, and year-to-date at fourteen point nine-eight percent. The industry average right now is a little under five point five percent, so we are three times better than what the airports across the country are doing, so that shows that things are going very well at the airport right now. That's it.
Okay. Any other reports? I did not, oh, Commissioner Womack?
Being the Kent County Commissioner of the Seventeenth District of the City of Grand Rapids, I have to report that the City of Grand Rapids is the first city in Kent County to opt into the medical marijuana provision centers, grow, and transport. We may be capturing up to thirty percent taxes off of the marijuana industry coming to Grand Rapids, Michigan. So I wanted to definitely get a chance to see how we plan, some paperwork on how we plan to spend that tax money, or exactly where it's going. So I just wanted to update that Grand Rapids is the first city in Kent County, top ten.
Thank you. Any other reports? I do not, oh, Commissioner Womack?
Being the Kent County Commissioner of the Seventeenth District of the City of Grand Rapids, I have to report that the City of Grand Rapids is the first city in Kent County to opt into the medical marijuana provision centers, grow, and transport. We may be capturing up to thirty percent taxes off of the marijuana industry coming to Grand Rapids, Michigan. So I wanted to definitely get a chance to see how we plan, some paperwork on how we plan to spend that tax money, or exactly where it's going. So I just wanted to update that Grand Rapids is the first city in Kent County, top ten.
Thank you. Any other reports? I do not see any, so we'll move to Agenda Item Eleven, which is miscellaneous. Any miscellaneous? Commissioner Breve?
Thank you, Chair. I just wanted to highlight a couple events that are coming to town, brought to you by the West Michigan Sports Commission. The first is August four and five. It's a softball competition, and it's called the Border Battle, so many softball teams from the US and Canada will be participating in it. That's at the Artisan Sports Complex. And then the next item is the Tommy's Wake Surf Open, and that's August ten to twelve at Millennium Park. And if you're interested in using some of your extra time, they could use some volunteers there to help run the beer garden.
Thank you. Commissioner Melton?
Thank you, Chair. Couple things. I had a, the wonderful opportunity to attend the Disability Advocates Celebration Party, I don't know quite exactly what it was, called at the Kentwood Library on Monday. It was quite, I had an embodder who we maybe don't normally watch or take notice of, entertain and be entertained, and some had a chance to sell some of the things that they were making. Of course, I bought one from everybody, and it was, it was just really a wonderful, wonderful afternoon. I, my hat's off to you, Commissioner Bukowski. Teresa from the Health Department was a wonderful advocate. I had a situation that came up with a church program in, in the Kentwood area, and I certainly didn't know what to do with it, and I called our Health Department. Teresa was right on it, and I was glad to have the response from the person back home. I was very, very grateful. It wasn't how they wanted it to work out, but they've been listened to, and they were very, very grateful, so thank you. And, there is no way that I can sit here and not weigh in on all that has taken place this morning. I'll be honest, while I do not appreciate name-calling, it's not something we allow in my house ever. You may laugh, but you will never be called a name at my house, I promise you that. I don't allow it for my kids, I don't allow it for me, and certainly I have let their teachers know that if they ever hear any of my children, and we've had several exchange students, and we've been legal guardians and mentors, we don't allow it. Having said that, I think that this commissioners at hand is a very necessary area for us to look way further into. Deep dive, not just my blood children. We've had seven other kids come through our house, and they tried to take them from me, until they knocked me out or shot me. They would not get a hold of my children. and very strong, that I would like for this Kent County Commission Board to look very seriously at this, because I tell you what, again, I come in to, you're not getting my kids ever from me unless you knock me over the head or you shoot me. I get it.
Okay. Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to say that I was in the ladies' room during the consent agenda, and I would vote aye.
Thank you. Commissioner Tallow.
Thank you, Chair. You know, the trauma that's being inflicted on families in our community is real. I have no doubt about that. I've heard about it repeatedly, and I share many of the concerns that we heard this morning from members of our community. I don't necessarily, it's a complex question. How do we address federal policies that have such a traumatic impact on our community, on the citizens on our community, which it's those people that we are here to represent, to serve? And yet we have this federal policy that's such a negative impact on our families. And, you know, I hear some of the suggestions for a solution, that this commission have a conversation of some sort, and I don't know what that looks like, if it's a work session or a group such as the friend of the court group, to talk about the issues, to look at what our options are to address those, look at some of the suggestions that have been brought, have some of those conversations. I think it's an important thing for us to do. It's part of our mission that we have right here in front of us, and I would respectfully ask that we consider how we might do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Bonk.
Yes, thank you, Chair. Monday night, I was invited to the State Committee Board meeting, and Commissioner Antor was in attendance as well, and we talked about some recycling issues and better partnership in the future, and had a good conversation with those folks.
Thank you. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I want to start off by thanking the protesters for working with us to have this mission. Also, I'm asking that we have some special order work session or meeting, because even us commissioners haven't had a chance to sit down amongst each other and see where we stand as a whole, or officially what we can or can't do. A lot of things have been said to the media, but we haven't even had a chance to sit down and talk about it. Also, the leadership of the protests has asked for, to at least see us on record on where we stand, so I don't think that's too much to ask. Some of my commissioners refused to sign that, and that's fine, because I know we stand on different sides to the issues, but for the ones who stand on the issue and really understand that tearing a baby from a mother's bosom, and this is on TV, and one month old's going to court, that we need to be talking to our Sheriff Department Administration and not the deputies, because I don't even like the fact how this decision for us working with ICE, we've allowed $18,000 to bring millions of dollars of damage when it comes to public reputation for our deputies who are simply just doing their job. But we're the ones put them in that position for $18,000. But when I see some of my commissioners who understand, but nobody wants to sign, it takes me back to my study of American history. When our forefathers signed the Declaration of Independence, it was a bounty put on their head. They were going to be murdered immediately by Great Britain, murdered immediately for signing the greatest Declaration of Independence, one of the greatest literatures on earth that still stands to this day. Something we all go back to, even in the argument today, we're talking about our rights. And this country was born on people who just had a dream that didn't believe taxation without representation, that didn't believe that the laws from Great Britain, they should be abiding. Now, we come today, and only one commissioner will sign that, even though everybody says it means nothing. It means something. It means something. And like I said, I'm not calling out the commissioners who feel totally different. That's what politics is about. We are always going to find ourselves on a different side of the board. But us that say we support this, we can't be cowards at this time, and I'm going to hurry up, because I know we've been here a long time. If we all took IQ tests, none of us would get every question right. I love politics, I love Grand Rapids, but I got every question right, I wouldn't be here. As a whole, we're on the wrong side. Today, the Kent County Land Bank, we bashed them for their original mission statement. We bashed them, because on one side, we got the Land Bank, who is not perfect. Like I said, I'm a supporter and one of its biggest critics. But on the other side, not only do we have private real estate developers, but we're not talking about the little guy and the little woman who buys one or two houses for income that really becomes a job, being a landlord, putting up with other people's mess. We're taking up for those big developers that can come and put money behind people running for House of Representatives, that I'm mad at the Land Bank. But when it comes to the Sheriff Department's original mission statement, where is it that the original mission statement for the Sheriff Department, and I'm not talking about the deputies or anybody that's just doing their job, but I'm talking about with this decision with ICE, where is our original mission statement that we will collaborate with an organization that's kidnapping children, that's going against human rights, that's going against the Geneva Convention? Where is that in the original mission statement, and why aren't they held to the same level of scrutiny that we did the Land Bank? Because there's no money for us to get out of agreeing that these babies being ripped out is wrong. And I do not put down anybody that supports ICE, because I understand that this commission, some of the commissioners that disagree with me, they understand ICE does a whole lot more than just rip babies out of people's arms. Jim said, and Bessie Melton said, we do need to have a work session on this, or it's going to continue to get completely out of hand, and it'll be our fault.
Commissioner Antor.
Oh, thank you, Chair. Real quickly, to Commissioner Womack's point, I don't think our sheriff is doing this for the money. I know, I know he isn't. We have a history, we have a history in this county and in the state law enforcement, where police departments work with each other. It's a professional courtesy sometimes. When one jail may be full, we send people to another jail. It's a courtesy, and I can't speak for sheriff, but all law enforcement works together, whether it's FBR, local, state, they do this all the time. And I know he's not doing it for the money. I know, I'm a believer in the rule of, I'm a believer in the rule of law and our nation's sovereignty, and that's what's important to me. We can have these discussions, and we are going to continue to have these discussions, but I completely support our sheriff. And deputies, thank you very much, guys, for being here. Also, I'd like to just do a real quick shout-out to our Health Department and our DPW. They've been really great. Steve Kelsall's been helping me a lot on the phone with the P-5s issues. Adam London, and he's been very helpful. This continues to be a problem where the numbers keep changing, and I just so appreciate their work. I think they're overworked right now. I know they are. A little bit understaffed yet and overworked, and I'm glad the state recognized that in the form of some money to pick up some of those costs. Very appreciative to all those people for their help as we continue to go down.
Is the actual 20th anniversary of the signing of Americans with Disabilities Act. In spite of it passing with extreme bipartisan support, it took a decade for it to get passed, so there was a lot of struggles. I won't pass those on at this moment, but thank you for that piece as we work for justice, inclusion, and welcoming of folks with disabilities in our community. Second, following up on some of the stuff that the Land Bank presentation brought to mind, I thought it was in one of the chair's priorities this year to look at affordable housing as the county. I know the continuum of care has had some issues brought to its attention about how well they're looking at affordable housing throughout the county, so I don't know if there's a report that can come to us as commissioners so we can see that and potentially be part of that dialogue. I know having to be part of a meeting on Monday where some things are moving forward, and I do believe there's a role for us in there. Third item, speaking of the medical marijuana thing, in my city of residence, Grand Rapids, my question is, is there something in this for the Health Department to be aware of, especially, and as a county, unfortunately, the state said every jurisdiction can do what they want. I happen to live in a border neighborhood, my backyard touches East Grand Rapids, they allow me to do that. But, you know, I don't know how many people are going to come from East Grand Rapids, Cascade, Ada, because my assumption is those communities will opt out, and everybody's going to come into East Town, and East Town's going to be the medical marijuana haven. I supported medical marijuana, I supported decriminalization. I think our country's prohibition on marijuana has done nothing but destroy lives and enrich criminals, but that's a whole nother conversation. But what is the county's role on medical marijuana? And at least to look at it, if we say, hey, there's nothing we can do, we need to be very conservative on our approach with medical marijuana, because some people wanted to open the floodgates and let everybody do whatever they wanted. But that's a different story. The reality is, that email just doesn't come from David Bolkowski, East Town resident. They know I'm a county commissioner, I have a longstanding relationship with these folks. They trust my opinion to some level, at least to hear me out, which pivots me to the final point, which is to thank the folks for coming out today to talk about this, our relationship with ICE and what's really happening. That we can say, hey, you know, we're just a county, this is a federal issue, leave us alone, but, you know, we're sending, we're sending letters, we're seeing our congresspeople at meetings, we're seeing our senator, one of our senator staff persons was here today, our federal senator, that is. They do listen to us, and at the very least, it is worth us to speak when we have to speak on these issues. I thank Commissioner Womack for his signature on there and that statement. I am not a person of color, so my experience in America is extremely different than people of color, and for the females in this room as well, because we also, we have a lot of issues with gender equality and issues in this country as well. So we're moving forward. All of that is to say, echoing my colleagues, we have to have a work session as soon as possible, and I know the sheriff has been willing to do this. Talked to the undersheriff, I don't know what's been happening over the last month, that people don't want to have this public conversation, because we need to have the facts. The sheriff, like it or not, is an independently elected person and can do a lot without us, but having us in a room, he has been willing to do that, we must do that, we must be able to. And like it or not, I wouldn't say we bashed David Allen, we simply cross-examined him. And some of us are trained cross-examiners, so I think we can have the opportunity to cross-examine the sheriff on what's really happening or not, and what are these illegal things that people are being detained for or not, because there's a lot of illegal things right now on my car that I'm sure the sheriff's not going to pull me over, because my passenger-side red thing, take the fifth, my attorney's telling me, but, you know, I could be pulled over for that, but they're going to see a white guy, ah, I've got long hair, they might pull me over. But that, we've got to get to the root of this, and then we must speak the truth up to the top, because it was bad in Obama, it's bad under Trump, so this is not a partisan issue. Immigration is, and who's going to pick our apples? Who's going to pick our blueberries? I can tell you, the white children of West Michigan won't be doing that unless their parents own that farm. So, and that's what we used to do a generation ago, you know? I had to go to my uncle's house and pick apples, and I'll leave it at that. So, let's get there, let's get in front of the sheriff in a public session ASAP. Thank you very much for listening to me.
There's been a couple of references to the Health Department. The new epidemiologist did have a session on the west side last week, two sessions, talking to residents, talking to people from the city about their complaint over there, their perception that there might be increased incidences of cancer that are related to having been brought up by the, what is now that Butterworth dump supersite. And I'm really pleased that, you know, the Health Department has picked up on it, it was on, it came out through the internet, they picked up on it, the sessions were held. We had an EPA official come from Chicago, we had DEQ from Lansing, and it was, there weren't as many residents there as I would have liked, or anybody would have liked. But, you know, it is going, there's an online form, a survey form that can be filled out, and then there are paper forms that are also available as they begin this examination. Is this perception, or is this real? And I'm very pleased that we did add an epidemiologist to look at emerging issues. And I am glad, too, that we were able to hear the testimony of everyone who wanted to address us today, and I appreciate the order and appreciate hearing the stories, the comments. They were not repetitive, they were very heartfelt, and I'm sure we will continue discussing.
Thank you. Commissioner Steck.
Thank you, Chair. So I was a voice that was perhaps more vocal in my criticism of how the public comment went at the last meeting. And in my responses, I included an invitation for these folks, for you to come back and to be as frequent in your presentation, to be as loud and vociferous as you wish to be, as long as we didn't interfere with the rights of others. And today, you didn't disappoint me. You were loud, you were vociferous, and presented a compelling story. The fact of human suffering is not complex. It's pervasive, it's visceral, it seems to be everywhere, as I say. The response to it and the causes for that are rarely simple. They are almost always complex. And a quick response to the, perhaps the loudest voice or the immediate voice, in my judgment, is never the right response. And that's why I think more analysis, more thinking, more consideration, because this is not an issue that this commission is generally held responsible for, is in line and in order before there's any kind of response. Now, do we take any response at all? Do we do anything that could be considered? Do we do it individually, do it as a group? That can be considered. All I would acknowledge at this point is that you've presented your case, you've presented it in a way that we've asked you to present it, and I thank you for that.
Did I see a hand over there? Oh, okay. Over here. Commissioner Coleman.
Thank you, Chair. I said I would respond at the appropriate time. I think now's the appropriate time. I think a couple of things that I would like to say. One is with some experience with the U.S. immigration system with a couple of my sons, I think we all would say that we want legal immigration to be more efficient, more accessible, because it really can be a painful and difficult process. And so I think that's something we should all be for, and we should all actually work towards. I think another thing that should be said is that if there are incidences in ICE or other organizations where people in a position of authority are using that to abuse or rape people, that we should condemn that as loudly and clearly and as often as we possibly can. That is not acceptable, it's not what our country should be, and I think we should all support both of those steps and work towards them. I do appreciate the comments of everyone. This isn't an issue, the ICE contract here in Kent County, that was on my radar at all, and now it is. And so I appreciate you all coming and raising this up as an issue to look at. I especially appreciate Commissioner Womack, his willingness to stand up. I do think that we should all find a way to have a more active, free-flowing dialogue that really gets to the bottom. I would echo everybody's sentiments there. Unlike Commissioner Womack, I will not sign the poster board, and the reason is, I don't think this is, that the right path is a simple on-off switch, like Commissioner Steck said, that's not often the most effective, and the goals of everyone are not often met by just an on-off choice. So with some further dialogue and discussion, I'd love to be part of that, and I think that we can move towards something that does help alleviate the suffering in the community. As soon as possible, I would support as soon as possible.
All right. Yeah, I wanted to finish real shortly with, I know when our sheriff signed the ICE contract, he could not foresee that this day would come or some of the things they would do nationally. So when I brought it up, it's never to bash the sheriff, but it's like, if he's part of Kent County, I'm part of Kent County, and we're on the same team, and I refuse to let a teammate keep bumping his head. To me, the publicity that it's bringing is not worth it. I'd like to add, there are other counties that have opted out against the ICE situation for this time, and they're not suffering because they're not participating. So we don't always have to work with other law enforcement the same way. And I agree with Coleman when he said, you know, that it wasn't on his radar, but he's glad that you came, because now it's on his radar. And that's kind of how I like to address the sheriff. I still think Sheriff Stelma is going to remember, be remembered as the best sheriff we ever had, and when he retires, is going to be a hard act to follow. But we have to put it on the sheriff's radar, that this is as serious as it gets. People who may say signing that is nothing, that, I could understand that coming from different perspectives, but me, I was born a poor man, so the first thing I had was my voice. That's all I had, was a mind, to learn, get educated, and a voice. And before I became a commissioner, I was just out there with the protesters, outside, yelling, screaming, because nobody could hear me. And I kept screaming until I could make some changes. I understand that signing that today is very important to me, because it, somebody asked me to sign it if I agree that babies shouldn't be ripped apart. So I signed it, because I totally agree, and I do want to say that I know that that's just ornamental. I know that's just the beginning, but I'm not only willing to sign for human rights, I'm willing to die for human rights. Thank you.
I see no other miscellaneous, so I'll call on Commissioner Ponstein to adjourn.
How many more people are there? Thank you, Chair. So I move to adjourn subsequent to the call of the chair Thursday, August 23rd, 2018, at 8:30 a.m., for official.
All in favor, indicate a state aye. Any opposed, we are adjourned.
We are Kent County.
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 Somos Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
We are Kent County.
Oh, yeah.